Okay, counsel, we're ready.
Yes, we're ready, Mayor.
Okay, good evening, counsel. I think I see everybody on here. Okay. Good evening, counsel. This is the City Council's special meeting for six thirty PM on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. And it is, first thing on is a call to order. Mike, do you want to?
Mayor Moran.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malchow.
President.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Here.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Ross.
President.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
And Councilmember Train.
President.
Meeting accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation twenty dash twenty-five, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still able, are still accessible, sorry, to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21. The city YouTube and Comcast, Channel twenty-one, within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting, again, at www.samamish.us/tv21, and YouTube, and also on Comcast, Channel twenty-one, within Samamish only. Pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Ross, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, I'd like to propose a change on the agenda for this evening, and that is just to change the order of one thing, because there's only a couple of things on the agenda, and that is to put the executive session after public comment, so that we can hear from the public first. And if, okay, do I have second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Great, thank you. And all of those, all those in favor of the agenda with the proposed change? Say aye.
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 Any ayes? Excellent. Public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation twenty dash twenty-five, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still acceptable, acceptable, accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written public comment will be accepted until five PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. Verbal comment of up to three minutes may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by six thirty PM the day of the meeting. The phone number of one five seven one three one seven three one two two. The access code of nine two nine three four eight one nine seven. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say, "Unmuted." When that occurs, the operator will ask you to begin your comment. If you would like to provide a public comment at the time of the hearing, please say so when you are unmuted. You will be placed back on hold, and you will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing. Mike, do we have anybody?
We have two callers.
Excellent.
All right. So I'll just repeat something what the mayor already mentioned. I will unmute callers in the order in which they join the meeting. When is your turn to speak? You'll hear an automated voice say, "Unmuted." And please note, if you would like to speak on one or both of the public hearings, please say which one when you're unmuted. We have two public hearings this evening. Item number one is a public hearing on the budget. Item number two is a public hearing on the property tax levy. If you'd like to speak on the public hearings, I will place you back on hold and return to you when the council reaches that hearing. And I will now go ahead and unmute our first caller. All right, first caller, are you calling for public comment, or for one of the public hearings, or both?
Public hearing on the budget.
Public hearing on the budget, great. Well, we will return to you when that item comes around.
Thank you.
All right, moving to our next caller. Caller number two, are you calling for public comment, one of the public hearings, or both?
Both.
Okay. So for, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say.
I was just saying, I was calling, actually, on all three, but, okay.
All three, great. So for the public comment portion of it, you may begin. Just please state your name and the city you live in for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Aurora Merchant, and I live in the city of Samamish. And I am, one of the main issues that I'm, I've called in, I know in the last several meetings, tell me to talk to, and link to the depth that I have, but it is surprising the number of variances to the law, or the code that you guys are adopting, and that are being granted at a undescribable rate of two thousand and sixteen, to a level that I'm now having to not only incur extensive amounts of my own time, but also with other attorneys, to try to justify even what the city of Samamish never used to approve. In fact, when I've gone to attorneys, they said, "Why on earth, the city of Samamish never approved these things, up until two thousand and sixteen?" I know that now, going back through the history and dealing with the amount of people that I've had to deal with, my short flat, for example, was never closed out. Nothing was ever checked off. Nothing, there is literally, to the city of Samamish, you guys have no record of anything being permitted, completed, shut, closed, yet at the same time, I'm being held to the letter of the law, of things that I cannot even bring to court, because the city, only until I brought up the Administrative Procedures Act, and brought up all of the, these intricate laws myself, and I'm not a lawyer, for me to have to dig this deep, to understand why trees are dying around me, why land is being moved in front of me, why cement walls are being built on the shoreline, causing hard hits on the shoreline, which will most likely damage my property, as well as increase the level of the lake to a point where I don't know if my dock will actually be underwater every single year at this point. And if it happens even this next season, even the hearing examiner, who granted multiple variances for four properties, back-to-back-to-back, in the conservancy zone, which fits the definition of R1, yet still zoned as R4, for some unknown reason, which nobody can give me, the city of Samamish, when I got, when I brought it to the, to the city, after hearing that the county's measures don't matter, the fact that the urban conservancy doesn't actually fit the definition of being R1, while, and I know Mayor Moran's property does actually fit as an R1, and is actually in a major subdivision, I live in a four-lot subdivision, with a stream that runs behind it, with a property behind it that actually, literally, my house, where I stand right now, had a landslide of twenty feet tall in nineteen ninety-seven. And it is not considered protected. It is literally considered an R4, but because the property's on the shoreline here, we're allowed to be given approvals to build. Now, I am having to deal with the fact that they're issuing a building permit without evidence that all required permits needed to build have even been obtained. The city is taking on legal obligations.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna get a cast.
Now I know why. I'm gonna lie right before my last statement here, okay? And that is issuing a building permit without evidence that all required permits from the state and from every other entity is needed to build, have even been obtained, and/or the integration of the permits even within the city, between the land use permits, which is variances from the Samamish, the Samamish Master Program, Shoreline Program, that contains specific conditions that must be met as a requirement, including the integration of both, of both, into the building permits, do not reflect the same conditions, or limiting how the land can be used, or what can be built, if the city supported the permits, or actually integrated. It's actually giving you guys liability, which is why you would need more legal protection. If you look back at the parcels that I have recommended to you guys, the reason I am telling you is that the, the hearing examiner specifically disallowed the city from actually disembarking from, from a liability. So right now, if my land goes underwater, I'm coming after the city for those reasons, because they knew, more likely than not, that climate change would occur. They didn't even go to the actual city attorney prior to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just.
And then I did want, did you think my house was under an R1?
My point is, if I have to pay higher procreating taxes, I didn't know that I have assurance, is all.
Okay, thank you for your comment, but if that was what you had been, if that was what you stated, that would be inaccurate. But, thank you.
Absolutely, no, it's not, it actually is true. And I'll, I will definitely send you the documentation to prove it.
Okay.
I have fought for five years on the subject. I promise you, Mayor Moran, I definitely have, and I can promise you one hundred percent, it is the truth. They're actually looking right now to build additional substantial walls, more than a hundred feet wide.
Point of order.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, are you gonna stay on the line for the following public hearings?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That is all for public comment.
Okay, counsel, the next we have is the executive session, and I believe we all know the routine, to click out here and go into executive session, and we will see you on the other side. We are doing this in accordance, yes, to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one G, and we have got thirty minutes is what we have scheduled for this. So it is one, six forty-seven, so, seven fifteen. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
And just a quick note, for those who have called in for the public hearings, you will need to redial back into the meeting, because we will be exiting out of the current meeting. Again, please redial back into the meeting once that is restarted. Thank you.
Okay, we are ready. We are returning to the City Council's special meeting of six thirty PM, of course, it's seven thirty, or eight, seven thirty, seven twenty, on Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. And we are gonna start off with the opening of our public hearing this evening, of the third reading.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion relative to our previous discussion?
Okay.
Have you made a motion, if we need one? I believe that was what I understood. Okay, I'm just gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
I know that we set up the subcommittee for the review of our city manager.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, hearing done? All those, whoop. Okay, there's a delay, so you have to, okay, was there discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so let's get this done, so we can get going, and, so, those on the committee, I saw hands, I see Kent Train, and I saw Gamblin, and I, and I can't see this, but I'm gonna suggest this other one, just because I know they have a background in this, would be Jason Ritchie.
Happy to help.
Okay, so.
Can you repeat that, Mayor? I couldn't hear those. Can you repeat them? It cut out a bit.
I saw Kent Gamblin. Ken Gamblin, Kent Train, and then, I'm suggesting Jason Ritchie, because that's his background.
Unmuted.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, discussion?
Can we make sure that all three can actually do it? I don't know how you know Ken can and Ken can't, but just wanna make sure all three can participate. I can see Kent.
Mayor, this is Jason. May I add something, please?
Yes.
It is important that this committee meet, organize, and report back before our final council meeting of the year, which I believe is twelve sixteen, but I may be messing that up. Can anybody help me with that?
The fifteenth.
Actually, I think you guys need to report back next week, because you're gonna need to give us the form that we're gonna have to complete before the final council meeting.
So we have a meeting a week from today, that'd be two one, I believe, two two, whatever that is. So we would need to report back with something tangible in hand before then, and then we will have action before the final council meeting of the year. Is that our charge duties?
Yeah. Because that's the eighth in, that we would have it back by the eighth?
I think we wanted, I think we wanted to.
Currently, there's nothing on the eighth?
We don't have a meeting that date, so we want to try to get something back in hand, get a phone call between the three of us between now and Tuesday, or a couple, try to get something hashed out, get some, some, you know, benchmarks out there, and then have something ready to present to council on the, a week from today, and then have a decision ready to announce on the following, you know, have that two weeks between the, what's that, the second and the fifteenth, roughly, to get our ducks in row, and get our information returned, get our forms filled out, whatever that looks like, and then report back and have a decision ready to report, or act it on, on the final council meeting of the year. Is that accurate, guys?
Perfect.
And currently, we have nothing on the eighth, but keep us in the loop on that.
Just wanna make sure we have our marching orders. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like a great committee.
Mayor, you've got something.
Do we have to vote on that?
Pardon? I didn't, I didn't hear.
Councilmember Ross is in the queue to speak.
And, and come back with the process, because, including whether we, I probably wouldn't want to get feedback from city manager in, you know, so that we can consider that as well in the, because there's a lot of things he does behind the scenes we don't know, and so we, him to have the opportunity to bring that forward, we should provide that opportunity, just to make sure.
Yes, I see Councilmember Train taking notes. What a teacher. Okay. Off and going, excellent.
Do we need to vote on that, or are we good?
No, I think we need, it was a formal motion, we need to vote.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, the motion's on the floor with a first and a second, and I called for discussion if there was any more, or any, okay. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, have a lovely time. Okay, next up, we are going to go to our hearings. And we are on the third hearing for the budget this evening. So this is the third reading on the ordinance adopting the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two biennial budget. So it's two thousand and twenty dash five twenty, but, two thousand and twenty dash five twenty budget. And who is going to, and we wanna open the hearing. And do we have, well, I know we have two speakers on this, correct? Yes, let's have the speakers, and we've been having issues with speakers, and out of fairness, what I'd like to do is, when the three minutes is up, I will give a verbal warning, and we'll, we'll let you go to finish that sentence, but we're only gonna go, how many seconds? Yeah, let's go, you know, five seconds to finish your sentence, and at that time, then we will stop the microphone, because we're trying to be very fair, to let people finish their thought or finish their sentence, but some people have this, like, to the second, and, so we have to be fair on everybody with their time. Okay, let's go to public comment.
Great. So we have two individuals who have requested to speak to this public hearing. Again, I will unmute callers, and when it is your turn, you will hear a voice say, "Unmuted", and you'll have three minutes to provide comment. And again, please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now unmute our first caller. Caller number one, you have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Jan Byrd, I live at three three one zero, two twenty-first Avenue Southeast, Samamish. And when I commented last week on the Community Development Department budget for Urban Forestry Management Plan implementation, I didn't realize that was one of the items that was being considered as possibly being dropped from the budget. I also realized you hadn't made your final decision on the budget yet, so on this issue, on this issue, I represent the Samamish stewards in saying, "This is really a nonstarter for us." I'm going to guess it probably is the same for you folks, since most of you ran on the platform of more trees. So since the revised tree ordinance was passed by council October two thousand and fifteen, we're already five years later without an urban forestry management plan in place, it is time to get it finished and implemented. Now, for this next part of my comments, I'm only representing myself, nobody else, no group. So it appears to me that the current growth track you're on is advancing at very low growth, but there are major gaps in our housing supply and commercial services. We need smaller, diverse housing that will cover the lifespan and life circumstances of our residents. There are also services, such as a hardware store, we really need, so we don't have to keep leaving the plateau for basics to keep our houses going. As I've mentioned before, we have eighty-five hundred residents, sixty-five years-old-plus range, and very few options are available to us. They're mostly large, multi-story homes, or adult family homes for those who are severely impaired. There's nothing in between, like senior apartments with basic housekeeping services, meals, or assisted living with some assistance with medication management and activities of daily living, like bathing and dressing. There are also few, smaller, single-story homes to downsize to. If a person becomes disabled, there's little available to accommodate them. If a person divorces, their income's now smaller, there's little moderate-income housing for them to stay here. So I agree with Paul Stickney asking that you add funding to the biennial budget to determine cohesive, holistic community growth aims. This would involve community meetings, like we do of them in the past for parks, with the Kohani Park Master Plan. After multiple community meetings for input, there was a presentation of three plans, with the positives and negatives of each. We need to do the same for our growth targets, how much, what type, and where. I'd like to see more attacking the problem, rather than the current attacking of others over growth. It's not a zero-sum game, it's not just unfettered growth versus no growth. There is something in between, called optimized growth. So let's do some intelligent planning by getting unbiased information, getting informed community input. Let's plan for the entire community over their lifespan and life circumstances, rather than limiting it only to wealthy thirty to fifty-five-year-old tech couples with kids. So thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to our second caller. Caller number two, you have three minutes. Caller, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, I apologize. I had my phone on mute, just in case, to make sure not to hurt you, anybody else calling in. I was calling in, I understand the mayor's concern about the timeliness. One thing I would like the city to reconsider is the ability to be able to make comment and hear back immediately from the council members, the way you guys talk amongst each other. So the reason I stay on for the other portion of the hearing is so that I can hear what you guys say, and so, and it would be nice if I could actually be able to make comments back, even if it's, you know, in the future, something that you guys, I really think you guys should, should consider, because I feel like I'm attacking at you, not with you, which is very different. Because my concerns are very much even in line with the lady that just spoke. I have very, high consideration in regards to the fact that the trees, for example, even, we are having major damage, from water damage that's coming from uplands, that is killing massive trees in our wetland areas, property. And they're just being removed because they're considered damaged trees, but they don't fit the definition of what you guys qualify as being substantial trees, I believe. Essentially, it doesn't fit the, within the definitions, because they're technically living, but a cedar tree, they don't grow up to twenty-two inches in width, even when they're over forty years old. So a forty-year-old tree, or to a hundred-year-old tree can be taken down if it doesn't meet twenty-two-inch diameters, which is diameter, it's not the width. The width, width of the tree is seventy inches, but it can be taken out with no problem, and taken out by one of the.
I have a point of order.
I'm sorry?
I need to speak with the mayor.
Yes.
I have a point of order.
Okay.
I can't hear you, I apologize.
Well, I very much appreciate Ms. Merchant's concerns here. She did receive five and a half minutes, which is two and a half minutes over the allotted time during public comment, and her comments don't appear to be related to the public hearing, which is on the budget. I just wanna make sure we're being fair to our other residents, that we're not allowing additional comment on the same subject matter, that it's unrelated to the public hearing.
We, here's my, my only issue is only one other person making a comment. If there were multiple people, then by all means.
We need to have this adjudicated by the chair, please.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, do you have comments for the hearing on the budget this evening?
Yeah, my, it has to do with the budget and the way that you guys are allocating, essentially, how you would be levying taxes, and how you'd be actually sharing that budget, and how you would, and that comes from how the taxes that are spent for the people that are actually being paid to essentially do services they are not doing, because they used to do them. Now, that, that, you guys are taking on the liability, which is why the city has the liability and needs more representation, is because of the fact that, rather than putting it on the people, which the law requires by the state and the county, and this is how law normally works, law, you have, the city has to follow the state laws, the state law has to follow, it has to follow the U.S. constitutional laws, right? That being said, that's not what's happening in the city of Samamish right now. You guys are not following the county laws, and you're not following the city laws, the state laws. By doing so, the county, the city is taking on liability.
Point of order, please, please, please. There's other citizens who may want to speak, and it should be focused on the subject matter of the public hearing.
I can have ten neighbors calling if that's what you guys want. We can do that, that's fine. But my point being is that, if there's only two callers on the call, I don't understand why you're telling me I don't have enough time. And if you can tell me that, by all means.
Mayor, it's important that you adjudicate this right now.
Yes, I'm gonna have you keep your comments addressed to the budget, and then we'll have you finish your comments on the budget, but keep them addressed to the budget.
They're, they are, they actually are addressed to the budget, because of the fact that the way that the, that the cap, that the city attains the money that they have, and the way they're looking to even get it through the tax levy, is based off of how we, the property, the value of the property that we own, and how that property is valued. If that is not addressed, that I am being unfairly taxed at an extremely high level, comparative to other individuals that have a different zoning or different rates, because of the fact that things aren't being compared, and my property's not being protected. I would be fine with paying it if I was guaranteed protection. I wouldn't have bought into this property. I wouldn't have bought into this property.
Okay, I'm going to have to finish up at this time.
I will. And I will make sure that I will, next time, call in multiple people. That's fine.
Mayor.
Thank you.
This is Jason. May I have a point of personal deliberation, please?
Yes.
I appreciate that this caller and this citizen have significant concerns. I recall back in several certain circumstances before where there are certain specific issues about a certain piece of property as it relates to the homeowner's concerns. And I appreciate that she has some very legitimate concerns that we need to hear. And we've heard about them repeatedly for the past few weeks and twice tonight, and I respect her right to do that. When we have had these situations happen in the past, we have asked the city manager to get in contact with these situations, this person in particular, outside a meeting, and to try to get these issues nailed down, to figure out if we can have somebody from Public Works or from Community Development help them resolve their situation. I appreciate that she feels like she's spinning wheels. I don't want her to feel that way. I would hope that we can ask the city manager to direct whatever resources is necessary to help this person find whatever resolution is within the law so that we can move on with our meeting, please.
Yes, we've already asked that David Pyle reach out to her. Okay, so moving forward, do we have anybody else on? We have nobody else, council, that is on the line. Now, do we have, we have got a presentation from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. I'm going to go through, excuse me, I'm going to open this discussion with a few brief comments to highlight where we are tonight in the decision-making process for the development and the adoption of the biennial budget for 2021, '22. In just a moment, and following that, Erin Anton is going to walk us through this recap with a series of slides to refamiliarize the council and the audience on the results of our recent discussions. At our last meeting, a motion was made wherein the council agreed to use $3.4 million in general fund reserves and recognize the fire station rehab project as a capital expense. This reduced the gap that we were trying to fill down to approximately $13.2 million. We've rounded a bit. That needs to be matched with reserves and/or any new revenues, taxes, or those expenses eliminated. There was another motion on Monday, November 16th, to direct the city manager to return to the council with a list of reductions in the proposed budget identifying only reduced expenses to mitigate this $13.2 million deficit based on prioritizing the expense columns in the budgets of all departments. The city manager returned the next evening to the regular meeting of Tuesday, November 17th with a prioritized list of reductions, starting with the lowest priorities to the highest where it was possible, and that the city council could then review and discuss, and from which they could make their own decisions regarding whether or not to sustain certain expenditures, that is not to cut, or which expenses should be removed from the budget to mitigate the $13.2 million gap. If the recommended expenses that the city council requested are not fully recognized or eliminated, then the council will need to decide how those remaining expenses are to be funded. The only options available are to use general fund reserves or to authorize the use of new revenues through councilmatic powers to raise taxes, or to use a combination of the two options. The decision to raise taxes could be an increase in property taxes or the implementing of a utility tax. Taking a cue from the comments and the lack of follow-up requested on utility tax matters, the focus is on property tax. I'm letting the council know now that we will, and we will again later this evening in this meeting, let the council know they must pass at least one of the ordinances provided this evening in order to have our property taxes collected and to bank the 1% that the council voted on previously. If the council agrees to do nothing else on the use of taxes this evening, you must vote on one of the ordinances so that the county can be noticed to take action and to bank the 1%. So Erin, oh, there you are. Please walk us through the slides for a recap of the dates, numbers, actions, and then the council will have some opportunity to further discuss those.
Sure, so starting back from November 16th meeting, so this is a collection of slides from that. And the first slide shows the overall timeline for the budget development process. And then we've added several things that happened since the October 6 filing of the city manager's budget. There was a special budget session on October 13th that reviewed that city manager's budget. Then on November 9th, we had another session. And then following that, we moved into the public hearings that were on the budget on both the 10th and the 17th. And then we had another special council meeting on the November 16th. The meetings, the public hearings that were on the 17th were continued to the 24th, so that's where we're holding third reading and public hearing, continued public hearings on both the budget ordinance and potential property tax ordinance here tonight on the 24th. And then reminder of those deadlines, the property tax ordinance has to be sent to King County by the end of November, and then the budget ordinance has to be adopted by the end of December, the last meeting in December for council. So overall look on the city manager's budget that was filed for the '21-'22 period as compared to the adopted 2019-2020 budget. Again, this shows it by the general categories of capital operations, proprietary debt service, and fund balance for the total budget for '21-'22 in the city manager's budget of $235.9 million. And then the increase and decreases are shown there as compared to the 1920 adopted We took a deeper look into the operating costs by department, so when we're looking at just the operations, so we looked at the '21 and '22 by department view of the operating cost totaling $52.1 million in '21 and $52.7 million in '22. And when you total both of those together, it equals $105 million of operating expenses. Then we took a look at breaking that down further into different categories, police, fire, and fee recovered services. And then the other bucket that was then broken down into the labor and nonlabor components. And that led us to the picture of the operations gap between '21 and '22 when we add operating revenues over that same two-year period, operating expenses totaling that $105 million over the two-year period, and then the difference shown annually there, but for the biennial period of the $13.2 million, and that is the operations gap. And then as the city managers outlined, the other discussions that council had on potential '21-'22 budget reductions, and those are shown in that table there that's been attached to this by department as we had reviewed back on the 17th of November. So then, just as a reminder, the questions that the council, or the city manager was looking to receive council's consensus direction on are in the area of expenditures, do we want to sustain, reduce, or increase existing levels of service and the associated funding? If so, which ones? And those more specifics related to the budget proposed for '21 and '22? And then revenues, which we've already talked about briefly, and then reserves is the third category of how you want to use that and how it interacts with the first two decisions. So those are the broad questions that want to be answered. And I'll toss it back to the city manager.
Thank you, Erin. And with that, unless there are any questions, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and the council to let us know how we can support your discussions or questions.
Okay, council. Let's see where we want to start with this. Let me go into the chat box here and... Okay, I think the, um, let's see, I see a couple of them here. Okay, in the chat box, first one I see is Councilmember Ross, followed by Councilmember
I believe Ross's comment was previously...
That was the previous queue. Is there a new queue going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Stewart's first.
Yes, thank you. So in the last meeting, we had asked for, or two minutes ago, whatever it was, we had asked for a list of potential ways to close the gap. I had also asked for a list of the priorities that were still in the budget that weren't included in the list of items to be cut. The city manager did respond to us and let us know that he did not have such a list. And he sent us a letter. I want to let the city manager know that when I ask questions, I am not questioning him, but merely asking questions because we have big decisions to make, especially when it comes to residents and how we may or may not spend their hard-earned taxpayers' dollars. So he ended his letter and he said that he looks forward to using this as a foundation from which to launch a strategic planning initiative with staff and council in early 2021, and that this will be followed up and supplemented with the development of a strategic financial planning effort to ensure we can achieve a structurally balanced budget within the next four to six years without sacrificing the high level of services the community has come to expect and deserves. And I appreciate it because I think that it is important that we have been operating this last year without a list of priorities, you know, that the council has kind of set out and done. And I know that a previous interim city manager pulled together a list of priorities, but the council never agreed to those. We haven't had that discussion. We haven't seen a list of priorities from our current city manager. And so I think it is important that we look at the fact that we don't have that list of priorities. We look at the fact that we are in an economic crisis that hopefully has an end in sight with some promising vaccines, but we know that that will all take time. And we don't really know what the current economic outlook will look like on the other side of this. We also know that optimistically, the state budget has, again, optimistically, has a $2 to $4 billion shortfall. And likely, our schools are going to need some revenue, or at least increased dollars to deal with whatever new health and safety protocols will likely have to be in place in the next year. So given that, given the current economic climate, given the statement from the city manager, I would like to move that we adopt a budget at the 2019 actual levels, which was, I think it was $46.1 million, if I recall correctly, and I can submit the chart of the actuals, I'm sorry, it was $43.6 million, with the addition of a couple of items to that. And that would be the additional money that we allocated to human services. I think those are going to be critical this year with the arch increase dues and with most of the requested increase for the police officers, the police spending minus two officers, as we don't need those until September because we have the SRFs. So that would be my motion. Again, that would be adopting a budget that is $43.6 million plus the additional human services spend, plus the arch increase, plus whatever is needed for the police increase minus the two officers for the first nine months of 2021.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the table. They're on the floor. And you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to speak to that, and I want to, you know, reiterate that for the last three years, I have been a strong proponent of our staff. I have a great deal of faith in our city staff. I've been a consistent and staunch defender of them. I know that David Pyle and Anjali Meyer have work plans and priorities that they're working to. Our IT department has come leaps and bounds in the last couple of years after the ransomware attack that we've had. And so I know they have a solid plan. Our finance team is top-notch. My staff, our new Public Works Director, has a work plan as well. I don't know him as well, but I can't imagine that he would come on board and not develop a work plan. So I know that these folks are competent managers. I know that they have a work plan and priorities that they are working to. But it appears that we don't really have an all-up set of priorities that our city manager is comfortable sharing with the council or with the public. And I think until we get that in place, and again, until we understand how this economic situation is going to play out, that the most prudent approach for us to move forward with is to take a status quo approach with the changes that we know we need to help our residents through human services, to help with affordable housing, and to make sure that we address public safety issues.
Okay, then I'm going to the Q box and... Hang on, I believe I've got, looking for, I've got Jason in the Q box, but I'm trying to see if I've got anybody before him. No. Okay, Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay, I'll be brief. I support the motion mostly because, there's two reasons, two rationales behind it, and I appreciate Councilmember Stewart and the work she did, you know, essentially putting together those numbers. I look at this as a little bit more of a blank slate. I look at this as there's issues relating to our budget that we just don't have information on yet in terms of income. And that makes me concerned. I think that we're relying on some things in the city manager's budget, and I appreciate that the time and energy that went into building that budget by staff and city manager and the questions that were answered. I appreciate all of that very much. What I'm concerned about is we seem to be taking a large step in a certain direction with the proposed budget, specifically in some certain areas, including community development that I don't necessarily understand yet. And we're relying on some income that I'm concerned may not be there. And there may be some impacts to our community with COVID in the next three to six months as hopefully, as Councilmember Stewart mentioned, a vaccine hopefully comes online. My reason for supporting this motion is not to be against the other proposed, the city manager's budget, it's that I think we need time. I have really tried hard to speak with those that I've spoken to on the dais and individually to say that we do not have to act right now on a tax increase, and we do not have to act right now on a significant change in budget direction. Do we have to do that eventually, both those things? I think we probably do. And I don't, I did not run to raise taxes, but I do see some structural failures within our budget, and it's been an education for me to see those things kind of become more clear because of the clarity that the city manager's provided and the budget he's presented. I have more questions than when I started, and I'm concerned that those are, that this is a longer discussion. So in the interest of time, given where we are in the year and given the importance of getting something in place before the end of the year, and recognizing that we are in unprecedented times with COVID, I think a status quo budget, holding things in place for now, is the most conservatively, fiscally conservative, safest thing that we can do right now and not take any radical directions right now. Now, will we have to do that going forward? I can get on board with that. I think we are going to have to do that. But I think it's going to take some time to educate our citizens and educate ourselves as to what those budget priorities look like. And we have a huge responsibility as councilmembers to build a budget that is reflective of our priorities individually and the consensus that we come to, and we hopefully get to the time to vote on these things. So I just want to be clear, my support of this motion, it's not in opposition to other issues, it's that I think we need to buy ourselves three to six months to get into the mid-biennial review period to try to figure out what we need to do. I think there's some other issues that are going to come up in the... there's some other issues that are going to come up in the next three to six months that we need to be cognizant of, specifically related to COVID, and I just want to make sure our powder stays dry to deal with this. So, I appreciate that we're coming at this from different perspectives and that we may not all agree that one decision or the other is the right one. I hope we can all respect each other to understand that we can look at the same set of facts and try to come up with different perspectives and still respect each other about trying to figure out what makes sense and was reasonable despite the fact that we may be coming at it from different angles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie. Okay, as next in the chat box, I have got Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that Councilmember Stewart has put in. However, I can't support the motion because of some of the additional items that would be cut from our budget, which I find are important. For example, our lobbyists, which are working for us right now, we would have to remove ourselves from the Kokoni Work Group, and we've put a lot of time and energy into our Kokoni. We would be sacrificing building inspectors, which if anyone is, you know, doing an addition or anything like that on their home, those are important in order to have, you know, timely services for our residents. We'd be sacrificing lifeguards, and let's hope that we can have lifeguards next summer. Training for employees in just about every department, and then for IT, we'd be sacrificing maintenance and repairs. And so, I'm just concerned of some of the potentials that we would be sacrificing.
Okay, hang on, I want to make sure we have gone around here before we start going on to seconds, second turns. Okay, before we go on to round twos, the other council members have any comments? Councilmember Gambler?
I'm good for the moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, then Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I did, Deputy Mayor, I want to see if we can get some answers to your questions because I believe in 2019, we had lifeguards, we building inspectors, and I'd like to understand what we wouldn't get in IT. Because again, I think one of the other points that the city manager pointed out in his letter to us today was that one of the things we have done in the past is, he was very clear to say that we have not been deficit spending. In the history of our city, we have not had deficit spending. We've had deficit budgeting. So, if you look at our budget compared to the actuals, we tend to over-budget and underspend. And so, in going through and looking at all of the line items and all of the things that we need to do in 2019, I think we had those things, right? We had building inspectors, we had lifeguards, and if there is any, if there are any other gaps, then I would welcome amendments to add those particular items that we feel are essential. So, could we get the city manager or maybe one of the directors to, did we have building inspectors in 2019 as part of those actuals? And through the, at a time, I think there were three points. Also, I think you also brought up the lobbyists and Kokoni Work Group, and so I'd like to be able to get answers on all five of the items that you brought up, if we could. Is there anyone from staff who can address whether the 2019 actuals have these items included?
City Manager?
I'd look to Anjali. Can you let us know? I think those items were likely line items in that budget at 2019 cost. Just trying to get any answers there.
And I appreciate, yeah, and I appreciate giving everyone a little bit of time because we're putting you on the spot, so take your time. I don't want to, so I think there were, just to reiterate, I think there were five points the deputy manager brought up. One was lobbyists, one was the Kokoni Work Group, another was building inspectors, lifeguards, and IT maintenance, so.
Okay.
Knocked down a rabbit hole. Those are out of, I just grabbed a quick snuttering that was out of the budget cuts as it pertained to the 13.2 or 13.7. I can't remember which it changed.
Sure, so that's why. That's why I didn't go to that list, and I see Anjali is saying that she's having some audio issues, so I don't, I don't know if she's able to speak or for us to hear. But I think that's why I went back to the 2019 actuals was because I don't want to get into a rabbit hole of the items that were put on the cut list from a budgeting perspective. Really wanted to focus on the fact that in 2019, we did have money for all of the things that were absolutely necessary. What was that?
Okay, hold on because City Manager is going to try to answer some of the questions.
Now, while staff is going back and taking a look at some of those line items, to hold the status quo, there are a lot of challenges with it. I just, there's a different mix of employees and vacancies that we've got to address. There's been changes in benefits. There's been step increases in the goals. We have maintenance contracts.
I'm sorry, City Manager, I don't want to cut you off. We're hearing.
Can the council mute their mic? And if Anjali is a. Okay, go ahead then, Mike, and let Anjali answer it, and then I'm going to go back through the list of other concerns that Finance has shared with me that we've talked about that are issues we have to overcome with adopting a 2019 budget.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, council. Okay, sorry about that. I think I was muted and I was unable to unmute myself. So, the only item I heard under Parks and Recreation were the lifeguards, and we did have lifeguards through 2020. So, I guess what we have to understand is we have come up with suggestions for budget cuts. This is, you know, the total that's come to 13.2 is based on our best judgment at this point. So, are we going to do that? Or are we going back and just mimicking the 2019 budget with exactly what it had? I mean, there are staff that have seen steps and increases and salaries since then, so are we going to take them back to their 2019 numbers?
Right, those are some of the questions we do have, Anjali. There was a, some of the other reductions that were identified was the Kokoni Salmon Group, and I'll have to go through my list here, too.
Sure.
But if those things were in your 2019 budget, I think that's just the question right now.
Right. So, the lifeguards were the only thing in the Parks and Recreation budget. The Kokoni Work Group was likely in the Stormwater Team's budget and the Public Works.
I can answer the Kokoni question.
As we go down this rabbit hole, each one of the items, I think the point is well taken, but the items that are in 2019 will stay, I think, just to save time.
I mean, I ask you a quick question, would, because Anjali, a good point about raises, would it be, if we looked at the information that Councilmember Ross had provided in looking at the, sort of where we think we'll end up in 2020, which is a little bit more, it's another three million, almost three million, $2.9 million, if we, at the end of 2020, would that take care of the increases in the salaries if we looked at the 2020 budget and where we believe we'll end up?
Mayor, can I add up my own point of order? I think, I think you need to explain. If you want to adopt the 2019 budget, I think we should just stick with looking to do that, what was in that budget. But there are a number of things, just as Anjali said, about step increases, COLA increases. We need to go back and analyze where our vacancies are. They're going to be different. They change all the time. Our service contracts, those have all gone up by a cost of living for the 1920 budget and the 2021 budget, some of them into the 2022 budget. Those all have escalators in, almost every one that's come across my desk. There are utility cost increases, service, other service contracts. There's more to it than just simply adopting a previous status quo budget.
I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. I also appreciate that there is a lot of moving around, and one of my concerns in looking at the budget is the legal expenses and how much those have gone up. In 2019, we spent .8 million. In 2020, it's 1.8, and the purpose is that 1.8 going forward. So, I want to make sure that we are not discounting the pay increases that our staff have received. We certainly can't roll those back, and I would never suggest that. So, I would actually like to make an amendment to my own motion, which is that we adopt the $46.5 million as represented by Councilmember Ross's chart, to read off for folks with the following changes. So, police would be the $7.8 million, again, plus, and a plus whatever increases we would need to make, minus nine.
I object, a point of order.
I'm allowed to make an amendment, yes.
Why are you referencing Councilmember Ross? Those are not my numbers. Those are the staff numbers.
I'm sorry, fair enough, Councilmember Ross. It was a chart that you had put together for us, so I apologize, Councilmember Ross. I wasn't trying to call you out. More trying to give you credit for having pulled the data together for us. So, I'm reading off the chart that.
So, we need to speak to the floor.
I'm trying to make an amendment to the motion because we have to address the salary. So, my amendment to the motion is that we adopt the 2020 estimated numbers that have been provided in a chart, and I will quickly read through those, which is police. This is on an annual basis, not on a biannual. So, 7.8 million for police, 6.6 for parks and facilities, 5.9 for public works and street, 8.3 for fire services, 4.2 for community development, 3.6 for public works and pavement, 2.2 for infotech, 1.7 for finance and risk, .8 for legal, 1.2 for council and city manager's office, 1.4 administration, .7 human services, .4 fleet and equipment, .5 non-department, and .2 emergency management. And again, we would then add to that the human services increases, the arch increases, and the increases necessary for adding the police minus the two officers would only, would start somewhere between June and September of 2021. So, I'd like to amend my motion to include that. That way, we include those additional employee raises.
Seconding the amendment.
Okay, Council.
And I think that should account for, I think that, to speak to that amendment, I think that should account for the concerns that were raised. Everything that we have had up until now, we're not proposing to cut anything. We are just proposing to keep what we have now. The only cuts we may have would be to trim down our legal costs again because those, I feel like, have gotten quite out of control. But everything else would be keeping what we have today.
Okay, I have got Councilmember Ross, then Deputy Mayor.
I'll just say it quickly. I don't support the amendment. It's too convoluted, nor do I support the main motion. If we're just talking on the amendment, I don't support it.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. I think I still have some concerns here, and that is one thing that the city manager just said, which was about not just salaries, but then there's contracted positions too, and we may get ourselves in trouble there. And then, as far as police go, even though we have the SROs covering us now, I think we can hope that our kids will be physically back in the field. I think we have to hire the officers nine months in advance, which means we'll need to be hiring them in January if we're going to have those officers replace the SROs that are currently in the field. And if I'm wrong, our police chief, I believe, is on the line. He can speak to that, but I'm not supportive of not hiring those police officers.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I'm happy to speak, but I believe Councilmember Gambler's ahead of me in the queue. If he's cool with me going, I'll go. If not, he's got priority, I believe.
Jason can speak, or Councilmember Ritchie can speak, and then I'll go.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest to Councilmember Stewart and to all the folks there, to all of us, that I believe the purpose, Councilmember Stewart, correct me if I'm wrong, is the status quo budget based on our current numbers, not where we were, not what we thought we were going to do, but where we're at right now. And that includes COVID. That includes emergency services. That includes everything. It's essentially a freeze budget from where we are right now and extend the current out six, eight months. Now, if that isn't phrased correctly in the motion, then I suggest Councilmember Stewart, with our emotion, phrase it that way. Because I do think there are, the way it's phrased, frankly, I think it presents some challenges and creates some loopholes where we could get into problems. My suggestion is that we have a motion without, whether it's a motion or amendment, I'm speaking to both. I think it's confusing. I think the motion that I would support that makes sense here that's coming out of this discussion is to have a status quo. That means right now budget. Where are we currently today? Who's getting paid what, and what are we paying money to, current contracts, current FTE, current contractor, current salaries, current everything. If we need more as we get three, six, nine months into this, then we'll adjust it as needed. But there are other issues that may get in the way of a significant, potential significant tax increase that we may want to use those resources for other places. So, the purpose of a status quo budget is to buy us time not to fundamentally alter the budget as is. It's the opposite of that. It's to keep things frozen as they are. If that is the intent of Councilmember Stewart's suggestion, I'm in. With the time duration on it, we can put a date on it. We can do whatever we want to do here, but we do need to come up with something. And it seems to me our options are kind of limited to some sort of negotiation over the next few hours as to how much tax increase we're going to take versus do we not take tax increase, and we go ahead and we try to do a status quo budget to buy us some time to see how things pan out with this pandemic? So, given the two options, I'm a fan of not taking taxes and trying to figure out how we can keep things status quo for a bit and figure out how this whole thing is going to land in our little community. And then, from there, we can make some more well-informed decisions. I'm up for whatever we need to do. I just want to be able to have it be more well-informed and have some time to sort these issues out. That does not mean getting rid of any people or cutting salaries or cutting contracts or anything like that or diminishing anything. And to be frank with you, if there was an amendment on that motion, if it was restated that way, that said, let's add the police officers, and that that required us to take a 1% or 2%, public safety is our first priority. I would support that amendment. But what I can't see going forward here is this back and forth thing where it's like we are basically up against the deadline of yes taxes and no taxes right now, and we're, you know, we're not really making any progress on that. So, Councilmember Stewart, I kind of put that back on you. What do you want to do?
Mayor, may I withdraw my motion and restate for clarity purposes?
That would be best because the motion on the floor is taking us back to 2019.
Fair enough. So, I will withdraw my motion if Councilmember Ritchie is amenable since he seconded it.
Amenable.
And I will restate the motion, and the intent of the motion is that we would pass a budget that is status quo, which means it is the staffing levels and the contractor levels that we have right now going forward. No. no additions, with the following changes. So it would be the status quo as it is right now with the following changes, and that is that we would add the additional spend that we have approved tentatively for human services. We would approve the additional arch dues that we approved earlier in the year, and that we would approve the money needed to increase the police officers. And the reason that I've been qualifying that is because the, what's proposed in the current budget proposal is for an amount of money that would hire on a sergeant and two officers starting January 1. And as discussed, we have SROs that are filling the needs for those additional officers right now. And so I'm merely stating, maybe I can state it, that we would add the needed money for the police officers so that we would bring on the sergeant and the additional two officers when those officers are needed, and try to do that so that they aren't being hired on January 1. And I appreciate that our, hopefully, our kids will be back in school by September, but they are likely not going to be back in school this school year. So we have several months, which will save us somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars potentially if we delay that. So that's my proposal. Again, status quo budget as it is right now with the addition of the additional human services spend, the additional arch dues, and the money needed to bring on the sergeant and the two additional police officers in 2122. But again, delaying those officers by at least a few months since we have the SROs on the ground right now.
Okay, Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Moran. So we don't need a status quo budget. We need a forward-looking budget. We're responsible for creating a budget that looks forward into the future, not back into the past for our answers. Because I've reviewed a number of budget meetings held by past council members in the last week or so. The common thread in those meetings is a statement of, we need to stop kicking the can down the road. We need to take responsibility for looking forwards. We can't do what we've done in the past and not take any revenue. Every single one of these meetings has those statements in it, some of it by people right here. And every single time, there's no vote taken to move revenues involved. So I think that needs to be part of this discussion. I'm not willing to just do a status quo, so I would not be looking to support this motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Now I have Councilmember Ross, and then followed by Deputy Mayor.
Okay, first of all, I think we all get the gist of what's going on. And so in light of that, I'd like to, one, call the vote, and if permitted, talk after the vote if we choose to call the vote. Call the vote.
Okay. We have a call for the vote.
You have to vote on it, or I can just simply withdraw my vote. So I'll withdraw.
Okay. So we have to vote on a call for the vote.
No, I'm withdrawing my comment so that we can just vote.
Okay. So Mike, I'm going to have you on these. I'm going to have you. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Moran.
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Malcho.
Nay.
Councilmember Gamble.
Nay.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross. Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Trine.
My audio's gone.
We can hear you.
We can hear you now. When you spoke up a moment ago, Chris, we could hear you. We can't hear you now. Your screen lit up green around it. We heard you set the headset down.
Jason and Chris, you can hear us. All right, can we, while he's figuring out his audio?
You want to go ahead and speak?
I was just going to say, well, we know how Chris voted, so you can call the vote there until we can move on. He put it in the chat.
Yes. Yes, he was a definite no.
Right. So can we call what the vote was?
Yes, the vote was a, it was a 5-2 vote.
Okay. Motion fails. Okay.
And then Chris.
So I think the question, do we have police on the phone? Is he on the line?
I think I'm back.
Oh, yeah, we hear you.
On the computer. Okay. Sorry about that.
Is Chief Hendry on the line or no?
Chief, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to get clarification back from a couple of asks ago. I believe that if we want to have officers ready to step into the role in September, assuming the SROs go back into the schools, I believe we need to hire those officers in January, because it was a nine-month training. So you hire them, and they're not ready to be in the field for nine months. Is that correct?
So the, just to be clear and make sure that everybody understands both sides, and I know that Councilmember Stewart has asked in the past about laterals. The agreement within the inter-local, the inter-local agreement between the county and the city is that the hiring, the hiring agreement is nine-month process. If, because of the ability to hire enough officers sooner, and/or if there were issues within the county where they had to make some cuts or hold some vacancies, the potential of getting them sooner does exist, but that is an unknown at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ross, did you want to start this off?
Okay, I'm kind of lost, because I lost audio for about three minutes.
We're in no man's land. We had a failed motion, so that's where we're at.
So are we still deliberating on Councilmember Stewart? So where are we?
We're done, and that motion failed, and we were waiting for you. You wanted to speak first.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. We've got a lot, let me just start with, the city manager and staff have been working very, very hard to work out the details. And the city manager also has acknowledged that we have a lot of information, but not a perfect information, and there's certainly more dialogue that's needed to really come up with a tight, succinct budget. And I want to put around some fence posts that challenges them a little bit, also enables staff to move forward to meet the main objectives that the city has asked us to do on behalf of the citizens, the city staff and their team. And so I'm very cognizant of, we're going to be, when we get to tax, it's going to be a difficult discussion, because we've got a lot of hot buttons ahead of us. We've got the capital budget that we haven't considered, debt service, we have artificial economic props, federal, state, and local stimulus and grants, as well as severance paper many laid off. And we're also not privy to the first-ever union negotiations. We don't know where that's going to land. We are not privy to those ongoing negotiations. So a lot of information's going to change when we revisit the budget in the biennial. But at the same time, we have some real, real needs that have been presented. I'm not entirely sure, and the city manager, again, has not, when asked a question, has answered it honestly. And, you know, like last week, there's some items on our 13.2 million that are sacred count, stuff that we don't want to cut. We don't want to renege on our commitment to provide human service grants. There's a lot of support of the police, which I consider, actually, not a follow-up increase, but a very fiscal responsibility, creative and very smart workings of the chief on that. So that's a good item I support. I looked at the list of 13.2 million, and the city manager brought back 4 million of reductions already. And we do have until December to finish actually the further refinement as needed. But it's honest and open dialogue, and one thing the major MRSC and other agencies recommend is the continual dialogue iterative process of the budget. And so with all that said, I really have three, a couple motions in mind, and I don't want to co-meat on them, because I want us to keep focused, because we have a bad habit of piling on amendments. But as I understand it, and then staff can correct me, right now, we have in place about 120-ish employees. Our budget calls for 134 employees. And so the first challenge, I'd like to challenge staff without getting in the way to say, let's, as a council, I propose we put up a fence post on employee count in the budget. And now, to be clear, this means either about, that's approximately about 10 unhired positions today. So we're, and the reason I want to put some fence posts on employment hiring with some of those headwinds I mentioned, is we don't want to overhire fully staff at 134. We need to challenge ourselves to stay within some level of fiscal constraint. Now, the other part of my motion is with the actual budget, and we can talk about what, if we want to reduce more than the 4 million already proposed. But let me just, first of all, throw out a motion, that the motion I have for the employee count is that when we approve the final budget, that it's limited to 130 total employees in this budget. So my motion is restricting hiring to stop at 130, not to exceed 130, until we revisit everything in the mid-by in the next six months. That's my motion.
Okay, so we have 131.25 is what we have right now? Okay.
What do you mean? I'm sorry, what you said confused me, the way you stated it. What did you mean, Mayor?
So currently, in the 2020 adopted budget, there's 130 FTEs.
Right.
Or, I'm sorry, 131.25 FTEs is what's budgeted. So we're just clarifying that the motion is saying that as it relates to the FTE count, you're looking at 130 versus 131.25 budgeted FTEs.
Correct. And then you can confirm that there's about 120 in place. So that gives you the flexibility to hire 10 additional new employees. Just to be clear.
Got it.
Thank you.
And is there, let me go to the, for a discussion, and I'm sure we have discussion.
We have Councilmember Stewart waiting.
Yep. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so Councilmember Ross, I really appreciate your desire to put some guardrails up. I think that that's kind of what we're trying to look for, is what the right guardrails are. The concern I have with your motion is that we're throwing out a number of employees, but we don't have, we still don't have that set of priorities. The city manager made it very clear that he cannot provide us with a bulleted list of what the priorities are. And we need time to figure that out, and just selecting a number of employees, in my mind, doesn't address that. And as the city manager made very clear to you a meeting ago, that whatever we budget for and wherever we allocate those headcount, he is well within his rights to move those headcount around whenever he feels like it. So again, I think that what we need to do as a council is come to an agreement on a set of priorities and where we want that money to be spent, and then look to staff to come back to us and say, this is the staffing it would take to achieve those priorities. So again, I really respect your goal here of trying to put some guardrails on, but I think that just throwing out a number of employees, we don't know where those employees are going to be allocated to or what that's going to be sent on, and if that's really going to go to the priorities that we, as a council, think are necessary to serve the community.
Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask you to clarify, because I have never heard this, we don't have priorities deal. So can you please clarify that for me?
Thank you, Mayor. I will. Councilman Stewart, I know we're all trying to be helpful here, but I don't want you, and I don't appreciate you mischaracterizing what I said. In my memo, your question was, I want a prioritized list of the balance of the budget. I met with all of my directors. There isn't a prioritized list of the remaining parts of their budget. That was the question, and that was the answer. If you would like prioritization from me, I'd be willing to do it, and I'll make decisive decisions. I don't have any problem with that. But don't mischaracterize what I said, please.
Okay, so, okay, so let's not pick apart people's words, and I'm going to go look at the chat box here to see if there's any. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. They're what?
I said, I'm next in the queue.
Okay. So Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. The reason I'm supportive of the motion is I think we're going to have to put bookends here, but I think there's going to be a little bit of give and take on just about everybody's part here to make this budget kind of move forward. Because we're sitting around 120 employees currently, that does give the city manager the ability to hire 10 more people until council can reconvene over the mid-by, which will be wrapping up a year from now. So we have a lot of runway in front of us in order to kind of better evaluate what the city manager might need based on priorities that we will be setting again in January. And so I do think that that allows the city manager to hear from council on exactly what we want to accomplish. Hopefully, we'll have a better sense of what the year will bring. The CDC today said there'll be a vaccine out mid-December, and while I am not under the impression that most of our population will be vaccinated in December, not even close, the reality is, is that, you know, I think we can look for, you know, mid-year to making a big impact. And so I think we will have a better sense of our trajectory in the months to come, and will allow the council. and will allow the council to set priorities for the year. And that way, the city manager can use that headcount that's available to him to add employees to the city to support where our priorities may shift to come January. And they could shift just based on COVID and everything else that's going on, so.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So thank you, Councilmember Ross. This is a kind of a movement in the right direction of setting guardrails, as you said, for spending and budgeting for the city manager without digging down, identifying each specific nodule and granule, and trying to manage what he's doing. It gives him the direction of what we're willing to do budget-wise, but gives him the flexibility to go ahead and apply that in how he best sees fit to manage his staff there. So I would support this motion, as a beginning point anyway. I think we can go a little bit further, but it's a good start. Thank you, Councilmember Ross.
Okay, before I go to another round, I want to go back and make sure, so Councilmember Trine, did you have anything you wanted to add? Councilmember Ritchie?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not at this time, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to go back up, and I'm going to Councilmember Stewart.
I was asked that the city manager, you know, you provided us a memo, and you stated very clearly in your memo that there weren't any documents outlining our priorities, and you have not produced any, and we have not voted on any. I appreciate it. I have asked Seven Ways to Sunday for a list of priorities. If you were able to provide some sort of list of priorities, I think that would really help. Again, I appreciate Councilmember Ross's desire to put guardrails on. An additional 10 employees above where we are today will still put us in a much bigger spend than where we are today. Councilmember Gamblin will come back on and accuse me of getting into the business of the city manager. It is the job of the city council to ensure that there is a clear set of goals, and that the city manager will then execute to those goals. It is clear from our conversations, it is clear that from the city manager's memo today, I have the floor, madam, it's clear we don't have an agreed-upon set of goals. And the city manager states very clearly, and I agree with him, he said, I believe it is our job, yours and mine, to provide the staff with a clear and consistent direction they can count on so they don't feel disoriented to what their mission should be. They should be able to point to the goals and objectives the council has adopted, so they too can develop and approve the objectives.
Can I ask that we stick to the motion that's on the floor?
No, I'm sorry, I have the floor.
While we're doing is we're using people's words against them. I'm going to ask that we stick to the business.
I'm not, I'm not using, Madam Mayor, I have the floor, and I am absolutely speaking to the motion, which is that we're talking about approving budget and approving headcount when we do not yet have, and we all agree that we do not have a document with a set of goals and objectives. I'm not using anyone's words against anybody. I'm saying that I agree with what the city manager said to us, that the should have a document of goals and objectives that the council has adopted, right? And that we should have approved the objectives and work plans, reflect the council's stated vision and values for Sammamish. It is from such a process and plan that will allow for the accountability for the performance of the city manager and the directors, because we will be able to better measure results. We don't have that, which is why I believe a status quo budget until we can determine what those are, agree upon those, and vote on those in an open session. Until that happens, we're approving headcount, and we don't know what we're approving it for. And again, I'm not, I am not taking on the staff. I have always been and continue to be a supporter of our staff. But I am concerned that the city manager has not provided us with that list of priorities, and he states tonight that he could easily provide me with that list of priorities, when I've been asking for that for several weeks in email and in open public meetings, and I have yet to receive that. We got a document from interim city manager Larry Patterson. While we all didn't vote on it and agree on it, he at least provided it, and after speaking with all of us, drafted it and got it on paper. And he too was dealing with a crisis when he arrived. We have not seen that from the city manager, and we have not agreed on that. And I struggle with approving additional headcount and with potentially having to approve tax increases when we don't have those agreed-upon priorities. So either the city manager has developed a set of priorities behind closed doors with some number of council members, or he has a set that he hasn't shared, or he doesn't have a set. Any of those are not acceptable ways forward.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor. We need to speak to the motion on the floor. So let's keep our comments to the motion on the floor, not to emails that were written today, because I haven't read my emails from today. So let's keep comments as they would pertain to the motions. And, yes, Councilmember Ritchie.
Point of order, please. Mayor, with all due respect, I appreciate your opinion about not using people's words against them. But there is no such rule that says we can't do that. And I appreciate that that may be argumentative, or may come off strong. But that is what we are trying to do. We're trying to exchange information and get to the bottom of what makes sense. It is not reasonable to ask people not to.
Okay, that was, that was not what I just said, but I, that was... Counselor, are we back?
Hi Karen, I'm here, it's Jason.
Is the feedback, is the question, is the feedback up?
Yes, the feed is back.
Okay.
Okay, I think we've got everybody, or should have everybody back. Okay, so we left with a motion on the floor with a second. And... And my chat box got cleared, so if there was anybody who was in there, you'll have to re-enter. Pam was the last one to speak. Okay. All right, Councilmember Ross, I'm going to have you repeat your motion.
The motion is to, as part of our budget solution, to hire no more than 130 employees. And we'll look at it again at the mid-buy.
And we've been through the discussion rounds. All right, then I'm going to... Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, if the city manager is able to provide us with a list of priorities, can we hold off on the budget decisions until we get that list from him? I'm just not comfortable making any decisions on the budget without that list of priorities. And I'm not sure what list he can provide, but whatever list he can provide, I would love that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I appreciate that. I'm throwing that out there and seeing if maybe Councilmember Ross would be willing to hold off on his motion until we got said list of priorities. We don't have to make a decision on the budget tonight. We only have to decide on the tax. So if we know that there's some set of guardrails we're looking at that can put some limit on that, so we can make a decision on the tax, to increase the tax or not, that's fine. We don't have to make any of these decisions on the budget right now.
Councilmember Gamblin. Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Councilmember Ritchie.
My question is relevant to the motion. Is that okay? I just want to make sure I'm not stepping on toes here.
Yep, I'm going to finish the chat box and finish with Councilmember Ross, and that's it for questions.
Cool. So I've heard several councilmembers mention that, you know, we may be getting into micromanaging the city manager. There are those that think that that's okay to do, there are those that think that that's not okay to do. You know, we can all see the same set of facts and come up with different points of view, and that's okay. My concern is if we are frankly, in my view, arbitrarily limiting the city manager to not more, hiring not more than 130 people on staff between now and what could be a year from now when we have our, typically our mid-buy, so that's one full year, essentially 130 people, and I believe he said our headcount was 134. Yeah, I could be wrong, I'm not trying to call anybody out or make any mistakes or put anybody on the spot. I just want to clarify that A, are we currently above that 130 number? And B, if we put that 130 number out there and we extend it out a year, I'm sure with the city manager's direction, we could walk it back if need be. But what does that accomplish? What does that do in terms of helping us, in terms of our discussion right now regarding whether or not we're going to take additional property tax bank capacity and other revenue sources? How does that accomplish that goal? Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I'll look to the finance staff here to correct me, but with 131.25 FTEs, we are way under that, because I think your question was, are we over that? I think the 134 number came from, with the proposal to add three positions in the 2021 budget, we would be at 134. And if the position that was going to be added was included in the 2022 budget, which was a mechanic, we would be at 135. I'm fine with working with the 130. We're below that now. We have purposely been below it for any number of reasons I've already talked about, and then sometimes it fluctuates, just we've had some recent resignations. Thank you.
Okay, and then Councilmember Ross.
Stop me if I'm out of order, but I am responding to the question, do I want to pull the motion? The answer is no. And based on the premise of priorities not being shared, we have discussed priorities as a council, and I just did a quick three-minute exercise, and it may not be all-inclusive, but I'm clear that our city manager and staff know our core priorities. Number one is maintain the quality of life in Sammamish, two, protect our environment, focus on the coconut salmon, provide a level of human services, support legal and risk management, improve infrastructure with cost-effective solutions, and provide adequate level service, and overall spend money wisely. I think it's more detailed than that than correcting council and others, but we're all, that's the core, that's the core of what we do. And we're going to go into the capital budget in the next month and figure out how to finance some of those key projects. But overall, that's what we do, that's what the city manager has reflected in his budget, both in writing and his budgeting, and his directors have provided feedback on that. So yes, it's not formal, and yes, it's, we, the council share in that, because best practice is, the council should be well in advance in the budget, submitting their budget to us, is we should provide them strategic direction and all those priorities in advance. COVID really took us in the gut, and so we're working very hard together, and I appreciate the city manager and staff bearing with us in this difficult budget process, out of circumstances, out of our control mutually. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ross. Okay, so let me, you were the last one I had in the chat box. Okay, so with that, I think we were going to, I think we were going to move on this question, because we had a first and a second, and we have had tons of discussion on this. So we had the motion, we had the second, and then Mike, we're going to have you call the votes on these.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Malchow.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
No.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
I've got a note here from Council, she's getting a poor connection.
Sorry, nay.
There she is.
Nay.
Okay, we've got you, Pam.
Aye.
Okay, that is a 5-2 vote, and the motion passes. Okay, Councilmember Ross, did you want to continue forward? She seemed to be on a roll. You're on mute.
4.3 million in cuts was presented, I guess a couple meetings ago, being us down to 8.9 million structural gap. Is that 4.3 included in this 13.2 list?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. And to use, and I appreciate, it's really hard to come low on the list, and, you know, some of these are high priorities, as you acknowledged last week. And is there any more headroom? If we were to challenge ourselves to say at least six in cost reductions, do you think that's doable? That's 4.3 plus 1.7 more.
I'm sorry, could you speak up just a little bit? It wasn't clear.
Yeah, I apologize, because I'm on a bad connection, and now I don't have my headset. Looking through the 13 point, okay, part of the 13.2 is 4.3, that you found a path forward to achieve those reductions. Do you think looking at this list, or even items not on list, that you can find 1.7 additional for a total of a $6 million targeted reduction from the 105 total expense?
Yes, sir, I believe I could. If, Mike, could you pull up the slide of, no, the ones that had my, that made up the 4.3? That would give us some guidance here. Work with me a second here, I've got to go back and review these, and then reflect it on my worksheet. So I'll turn my mic off a second if we can just study this thing a moment.
Sure.
Yes, I'm back on the line here. In priority recommendations that were coming from Public Works on overlay is where I would look to first. And Jeff, are you on the line? I want to include you in this dialogue.
Yes, city manager, I'm on board. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you. We have marked here in the recommendations that I originally made, we had the two $500,000 hits on Kohani. We talked about the PCI on those, and that, I think it was Deputy Mayor Malchow had asked about the CPI on that, and it was like 48 or something, and postponing that for a couple of years wasn't going to harm it. And then I have $500,000 in on-call support, travel signal system replacement, but as I'm looking at some of the lower priority items that you had recommended, I think we can get still a lot done, and maybe we look at the item that was marked Other Streets, and we can choose to defer this. That in itself was almost 1.6. What's your feedback on that?
Okay.
And?
So let me, let me start with this, is the proposed August budget that the city manager had was in the neighborhood of $6.3 million for the biennium. And we, at best, would not want to go below 2 million for the entire biennium. So we're showing on this slide here, 1.55, or 3.1, if you will, and of that, only $1 million is in the paving program so far. So there's another 3 million that you can go forward to get to 4, so to speak, of the six.
Right, so to your question again, Councilman Ross, was, could we find another 1.6? Was, was, that the number?
1.7, 6 million.
1.7?
1.3 plus, yeah, 1.3 plus 1.8.
Okay, well, I'll up you 100 and go to 1.8.
Oh.
Okay, let's go. Okay. I just have a dialogue back and forth. I much prefer working to our target number, and then being able to sit down with staff and target where that might be in general terms. I would look to be able to do that, and then some of the smaller items, you know, coming back for, that keeps, that makes an assumption that some of the human services and some of the other smaller items, that when you're getting to 13.2 we had to include, maybe we don't have to include. So I don't want to make any other assumptions. So yes, we can, we can meet that additional number of 1.8.
And of course, we all agree, we'll never, we might not put our street overlay condition at risk. If we get there, we have the mid-buy or even before then to address that with council approval of additional funds if needed.
And we do have--
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead. I was going to add, regarding the city's PCI, we currently sit at an 83. And in the Puget Sound region, you never want to go below a 70. So over a 10-year period, depending upon what level of reduction or deferred maintenance, let's put it that way, that you choose to take, we would be in the 75, 74, 78. It just kind of depends what we have to spend going forward. Hopefully that helps.
That does, it does. I really appreciate that, Jeff. Okay, so I will make a motion. I make a motion that we direct the city manager to reduce the expense budget by $6 million of his choosing.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, which leads us to discussion, so hang on. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate, Councilmember Ross, you citing some priorities. Clearly, at a very high level, those would be the priorities of just about any city, and certainly no one's going to argue with things like public safety and spending money wisely. I do think that it is our responsibility to get a little more specific here in Sammamish. I'm not comfortable writing a blank check, just saying, you know, city manager, go, go make some random decisions. I'm still concerned that we've more than doubled the amount of spending on legal fees, and I appreciate the city manager sent us a lot of information on that. I still don't think there's a justification for it. We're spending a lot of money on legal fees. That doesn't give services to our community, that doesn't give us parks, that doesn't give us, that doesn't give us, you know, partnering with our schools. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the, you know, go ahead, city managers, just do whatever. I think we, it is our job, again, to set more specific priorities and to provide oversight, and writing blank checks to the city manager with no oversight and no accountability is definitely not our job.
Okay, next in the chat box, I have got Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'm not entirely sure I'm comfortable with this, so I want to ask some other questions, because Councilmember Ross started off the conversation with the 4.33 million dollars that was identified by the city manager, which was pretty detailed in terms of what exactly he was going to cut. And then the ask is to find an additional, what was it, 1.7, to make it an even 6 million in cuts to what's proposed. And then we started talking about the pavement overlay. And so I want to start there, because then the motion became of the city manager's choosing. And so we went from specific in the 4.3 to talking about pavement overlay to generic. So I need to have this a little bit more focused, and I want to hone in specifically on the pavement overlay, because we had identified Kohani Boulevard, which was going to transpire over two different years, to repave the entire way, 500,000, I think, it was either 500 or a million dollars total for the overlay. And I did ask the city manager to confirm that waiting and essentially keeping that can down the road would not force our hands at repaving the street in its entirety, and the answer was yes, it can wait. So I think the question I have now, just to confirm what you all were just discussing, is are we talking about waiting on overlays in, on other streets as well? And then I want to confirm that by waiting, we are not putting ourselves in a position where those roads could get to a level where it would force our hands at spending more money than the overlay would have cost if we had not kicked that can down the road? And is that exactly where you're going to go? And is there another $1.6 million in overlays that could be sacrificed?
I'll let the specifics be addressed by Jeff, but in general, what I was referring to were more overlays and some repairs. We have a number of streets that are listed under this maintenance category that have been waiting to be repaved and repaired according to some of the residents here for 20 years. And we were trying to make that a priority, and I still believe it preserves it. But Jeff, you're the most qualified to speak to the issue of these overlays, so please do.
Thank you, city manager. In answer to the question, and just a point of clarity, regarding Kohani, we are talking about delaying the pavement for two years, and it will not cause us to reconstruct the road, i.e., going down into subbase. If we hold off for two years, the rating slides down to about a 48 or 49 in that zone, but it does not cause us to have to fully reconstruct that street. So I want to be clear on that. Regarding the rest of the program, depending upon the level of funding of the, again, I want to talk about $6 million total for the biennium, the balance of the dollars are used to cover 228, which is a critical arterial, I need to get that paved next year or over the next two years. So that's a high priority, and it's our arterial, so you don't want to let that street slide. And then secondarily, we want to begin the program of repairing, rebuilding these neglected streets that go back to the time the city incorporated. And depending upon the level of funding will dictate how far I can go with that. So it depends, and our overall PCI slides further down over a 10-year period. If we're, if this is just a two-year bite, that's one thing. If it's, if it's a two-year bite, but we're going to get back to the program in the future, then that, that's a different, you know, PCI at the end of 10 years.
Okay. So what PCI do you have to get down to the subbase or the base, as you had stated, and actually repave the road?
You know, when we get below 40s, and some of the streets are in the twos and threes, literally, or zeros, I mean, but when we start seeing our groups of streets that are at 40 or lower, we are taking a hard look at doing the geotechnical analysis to discern are we into the subgrade or not. Now, what's fascinating about Sammamish is that some of the streets that are at a 40 only have an inch of pavement and no subbase under it, therefore the road will be reconstructed. However, there are some surface streets that are a 40 that have three to six inches of pavement and/or a subbase underneath it. So it kind of depends. It depends on the specifics of the street that we're talking about. But in general, when we start looking at a 40 or below, we are likely into roadway reconstruction, more than likely.
Okay. And I don't mean to dive into the weeds here on this thing, but I'm also aware that we're expected to have a harder winter, and I do know from enough years of talking about this that anytime you have freezing and thawing, and the water gets down into the cracks, it breaks the pavement, and that could lower the PCI rating. So I'm a little concerned, and I know that Councilmember Ross's motion was, you know, at the city manager's discretion, essentially, as to where they, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be on the overlays, although the original 4.3 million dollar budget reduction did include a million dollars worth of at least the Kohani Boulevard overlay. I guess I'm just, I feel a little uncomfortable further slashing into the budget, because most of these things, especially pavement overlays, are things we're going to have to do, whether we do it now or whether we do it later. And I don't know if Kohani Boulevard was offered up just based on the length of the road, and therefore it was a higher dollar volume, but I think council can recall, we are getting emails from some folks down near the parkway, and they were complaining that they keep getting their can kicked down the road on repaving, and I just, I'm concerned that, you know, these are all going to come back, we're going to have to figure this out. I think at the end of the day, folks, we have a structural gap, whether we took the full bank capacity to pay for it or not, and we make cuts, there's still likely to be a gap, even if we, you know, do this, there's still a gap to be filled, and these projects still have to be done. So I'm going to listen to my fellow council members, but I'm not completely sold on this one yet.
One other note, just before you go there, recognize that we are preserving money in the paving program to reevaluate all the streets citywide in 2021, so that we have another data point. The last time that we did the rating was five years ago, and so some of these streets are projected, you know, degradation, and with the new data point, we'll have a more clear, more of an actual degradation, and so it could change which streets age or are aging at different rates. Just wanted to let you know that.
Deputy Mayor, were you done? Okay, next I have Councilmember Ritchie.
I'm going to go ahead and defer to Councilmember Ross regarding his motion. Thank you.
I wanted to mention that, Mike, I appreciate everything you said, Deputy Mayor, and I share your concerns. We're, Jeff is monitoring the condition, and as I mentioned in my comments earlier, that if we find out that it degages faster than anticipated, or the condition is something that we need to address immediately, we have several avenues to fund it, whether it be the mid-buy or any other type of funding mechanism that we pull the lever on approving such projects. So absolutely in no way whatsoever are we going to let anything degrade to a point where it's going to be overly costly to the city. So I hope that helps alleviate some concerns. This gives us, again, a way for us to target ourselves, to get as tight of a budget as possible, and I appreciate staffs bringing forward these cuts, and then in the spirit of more information later, we'll even have a more robust discussion, and it may end up with many new decisions. It absolutely will require new decisions in the mid-buy. But this is working with what we have at hand right now.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
I'm coming, sorry. Did Councilmember Ritchie, did you want to make a comment?
No, I've got all the information I need. Go ahead, thank you.
All right. I just, you know, it's interesting, because we've kind of gone up and down here tonight. We've been, we don't want to get too in the weeds, we want to stay high level, you know, the 2020 budget included pavement overlay, right? So, you know, I'm not trying to second-guess the director, but I do question the list of cuts that were pushed, put forward, whether it be the 4.3 or the 13.7 or 13.2, the various lists we've gotten, in that, you know, we really went about this budgeting process, I think, completely backwards. We never started with where we were today, with, you know, here's where we are in 2020, here's what we're adding, and here's what we're subtracting. When you dig into the budget, you see that we're adding a lot of budget to community development, and in areas of the planning, which I find interesting, since we're currently in a moratorium, and we're pushing to have a growth target, whereas we're looking to cut back on things like public works, when we know that we have work to do in stormwater, you know, possibly some retrofits in some areas where we have some stormwater issues we need to deal with. So I feel like we are getting in the weeds, we're missing the forest for these trees, and that's why I feel like we shouldn't be moving forward on these decisions until we have time to have those discussions. Why are we spending more? Why are we putting out, you know, I wasn't even aware that we were going to, but we put out what looks like an RFP to do possibly a new traffic model, I'm not even sure what that is. So I think there's some transparency that's missing here in terms of the rearranging of the budget, which is why I think it's important that we get kind of that next level of goals and objectives, and what the work plan for 2021 and potentially 2022 really looks like. looks like, because I think there's a lot of moving parts that we're just not really getting clearly articulated. And maybe when I say "we," maybe it's just me, maybe the other councilmembers have had that clarity provide them, not.
Dave Pyle, are you on the line?
I am here, Mayor.
Perhaps you could answer some of the questions that Councilmember Stewart had?
So the statement that I heard was that there is a significant increase in the DCD budget, and I want to point to the packet for the evening, I believe it's page 37 of 72, where it shows the DCD budgets by year, and it shows it in terms of the 2017, 2018 actuals, the 2019, 2020 budget, and the 2021, 22 budget. And it shows that the 2019, 2020 budget was $9,900,560. And the 21, 22 budget is $9,385,050. So it's gone down around over $500,000, what's proposed as opposed to what was approved last year. I do want to take a minute just to highlight that in DCD, we really don't feel that it's a fair comparison to compare actuals for 19 and 20 versus what was budgeted. We've been through some, I would say, unprecedented times in the city, whether it was a malware attack, whether it was a repeated transition in leadership, and whether it was a, you know, a pandemic. That all happened in 19 and 20. So because we were unable to spend some of the monies that were in our budget for 19 and 20, we feel that comparing that to actuals is actually, you know, somewhat unfair, because we actually haven't had the opportunity to get several of the projects that we had slated to start in 19 and 20 off the ground, because we had been sidelined with a malware attack. We didn't really have steady leadership where we could rely on to work the council to get things started and get proper council feedback. Then we ended up in a pandemic, which also slowed our ability to get projects started. Nonetheless, we've tried to continue to keep projects moving, and we also, at the same time, have had a hard time hiring, because there have been other priorities with our human resources staff who are thinly staffed. We finally have two staff in that department. So I just want to highlight that the DCD budget has actually gone down as compared to what was approved in 19 and 20 by, you know, over $500,000 as for what is currently proposed in the City Manager's budget that is in front of you in your packet.
I appreciate that, Dave. One of the things I'd like to point out, though, is that salaries are up, benefits are up. A lot that has gone down is you've removed out the part of the City Manager salary, and you've completely stripped out all of the economic development planning and the town center professional services, or I think, right, yeah, town center consultant. So while it has gone down, some of the things have just disappeared completely, and we're still increasing the salaries over the previous budget by, what is it? It goes from what, 1.784 or 1.785 to 1.981. So I'm just curious, because I know that we, you know, we have a council majority that is driving us into a minimized to zero growth period, which is fine, that's what the majority gets to decide on, but if that's the case, then why are we spending most of our money here in the community development? And it's concerning, because I feel like there's just a bit, at least from my perspective, a lack of transparency on these, comparing these work plans, because I think, you know, what I hear from the community is they want more in parks, and they want more in some of the other infrastructure. And I see a lot of, you know, we're still not talking about the $2 million, over $2 million increase in legal fees, and I just, I get concerned. Go ahead, David, I'm sorry, you were going to address the salaries.
Yeah, so we do have two limited-term employees included in the salaries and benefits for 21, 22, as proposed. Those positions will sunset at the end of '22. That includes a project manager in the planning division, who is there to assist with much of what we call the on-call and on-demand work that the council asks us to take on, such as school impact fees, school concurrency, other projects that the council has an interest in us taking on. And that position is really there to assist in keeping those things moving forward. The other position is a limited-term code compliance coordinator. We have an unbelievable spike in the number of code compliance cases and calls that are coming in, and in order for that staff to stay ahead and also to retool their shop to be able to handle things more efficiently, we are looking at bringing onboard a limited-term code compliance coordinator to assist in carrying some of that caseload, to free up the ability of our full-time, longer-term employees to look holistically at how we handle code compliance cases and try to design a program that is more efficient. So those are some of the costs that you're seeing an increase in, because those are limited-term employees that are rolled into the larger salaries and benefits. To cut those, you know, would mean that we continue on with our current code compliance staff of 1.75 employees, who are seeing, you know, exponential numbers of cases and really have no ability to fix the system, so that we can handle them more efficiently. So, you know, there are choices to be made, and, you know, if the council wanted to eliminate the limited-term employees, then that means that the department has less capability to keep up with some of the things that are sort of the flavors of the month, if you will, and the things that the department are being asked, is being asked to take on and quickly. Regarding planning, there has been, for a long time, and this has been presented to the council with the development regulations update that we've been going through, we have had a King County code in place since 1999, when we incorporated. There have been very few changes made to that code over time, and the result of that is development that, over time, we've seen an increase in the size of homes and a decrease in the size of lots. We've received lots of feedback from the community that this is not in keeping with what the character should be in Sammamish. So we've undertaken several planning efforts to rewrite codes, which includes staff time. So that's an example. Another is in a start on the comp plan process and our engagement in the county-wide planning policies updates and the urban growth capacity study that will be ongoing into '21 and '22. These are significant efforts, regional efforts. There are other issues that are cropping up in the community with regard to infrastructure capacity, school infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. These are all things that we need to take on, and we need to be staffed for, you know, staff appropriately to deal with. If we don't have the staff available, and staffing is not at the level that's needed to participate in these efforts, then we're basically, for all purposes, being set up for failure, because we don't have the time to spend looking into the details at a level the council wants us to look into.
Thanks, David. And I would just submit to council that these are the types of in-depth conversations we need to have with every department, and we haven't had those. And I think that these are the kinds of conversations we should have been having all summer into the fall. And that's why I think that having a status quo budget, where if staff comes to us and they need more, we have the fund balances that we can dip into for the very rainy days that we are currently facing. So appreciate all the explanation, David.
Thank you, David. I think that was very important. And to the whole council, that's why I tried to take advantage of that time in August, that we're normally dark, we started to address a few things. We were behind, and I teed up work-study sessions on the operational side of the budget and the capital side of the budget. And I don't feel I got much participation back from the council. So we did start early. I met with finance early, so that we would have plenty of time. I'll know better to be more strong-willed about dragging people to meetings and putting those things out there in the future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next in our chat box here, we have got Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, actually, Councilmember Ross and the subsequent conversations have answered my questions. I'm ready to vote.
Deputy Mayor?
I appreciate the robust conversation that we've all had here on this, and, you know, I'm keenly aware in the back of my mind that our community has some pretty high expectations for how our city functions, and, you know, I could probably go either way on this one, but I think the original $4.3 million that was offered up by the City Manager as far as additional cuts is a known entity to us, and so I'd like to offer an amendment, which is to simply adopt the reductions that were originally presented to council in the slide that's sitting up here right now, about $4.33 million.
I'd second that. Okay, so we have an amendment, I have an amendment on the floor. And now we have discussion open for the amendment on the floor. Chris, do you want to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, I think it's the $4.33 million here, I mean, and there's other slides that go along with this one that describes in each of these buckets exactly what it is we're talking about, but since public works just happens to be sitting here, we're talking about a singular overlay on one fairly major street, but then you can see, you know, to half a million dollars every year, what we're losing. And how many emails do we get about our ITF system, like, not working right? I'm just, I'm keenly aware of these service asks that our community has of us, and, you know, the additional $1.7 million, you know, we're talking about, you know, $800,000, $850,000 on an annual basis. And I'm not trying to minimize that dollar amount, but in the grand scheme of things of our full budget, it's pretty small, and I'm, we're just starting to whittle away a little bit at the service expectations, I think, that our community has. So I'm comfortable with the City Manager's proposed reductions of that $4.33.
Okay, comment, Councilmember Ross, followed by Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Ross, I think you're on mute.
It keeps going on and off. Okay, hear me now? Good. Okay, thank you. We can't get fixated on these costs layered on an estimate. In other words, we've done a couple things. One is we're holding back hiring employees to a high-water mark of 130. It's going to take time to hire the 10 people that are not filled. That's going to drive some level of underrun in budget flexibility. Also, the additional four approved in '21 and '22, 1 in '22, and 3 in '21 are not going to be put in place right, right, well, not at all currently, or some version, you may choose to hire those folks and not one of the prior biennials. But anyway, this gives the city staff the flexibility to manage their budget. And I think in my proposal, I didn't say, let's get focused entirely on that street project or that road project. They are levers now, known levers now, but the dynamics of budgeting and actuals coming in and underruns that may occur are going to drive opportunities to spend in different areas or pull funds forward in different areas that previously thought you were going to not fund. And then also, we are going to revisit this in the midbuy, make sure that we aren't putting roads at risk, which is the major concern, and I am concerned about infrastructure fixes. And so I don't see this as, the precision that Deputy Mayor sees it as, is simply adding on to assuming the rest of the costs are actual, these are additive. So I think there's more flexibility in the budget inherent in when actuals come through. So I don't support the amendment. I felt like we had a real good dialogue with staff, and I give him kudos for trying to find opportunities to find the reductions, so that it helps complement our solutions, our full or part solution from a structural standpoint. So that's on my comment, I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Can we save a slide on the parks and facilities reductions that this includes, just so we can all refresh our memories here?
Councilmember Stewart, would you repeat that for me?
Yeah, that's it. I just wanted to see, because Deputy Mayor had proposed these $4.33 million in reductions, and I wanted to see what we were, so we're going to not backfill two of the three vacancies in parks maintenance, which, to me, you know, again, if we're getting into who we are and aren't going to hire, I'd much rather see us have parks maintenance employees than to spend an extra $2. whatever million in legal fees. So I would, I would not be in favor of not hiring in some of these parks maintenance workers, because I know that even when our parks are closed, there's maintenance that needs to go on in those parks. And I'm not recalling completely what the facilities repair maintenance projects for '21 and '22 were. I don't know if that was the fire station apron projects or what those were, but I think that our parks, in particular, are one of our biggest assets and one of the things that our community enjoys the most, and I would say that depending on when things will get back to normal, if we start the spring and the summer and we're still in some form of partial lockdown, people are going to want to be able to get out and use the parks, and that's going to be critical, because the outside in the parks is kind of all we've got right now. So I'm just concerned about that. And I'm very concerned that we're, again, we're, you know, from the 2019 levels, we are more than doubling our spend on legal services, which I don't feel is the biggest benefit to our community. So I'm not supportive of this amendment, although I do appreciate the spirit of it.
Mayor, members of council, if I can address, there's, the change in what we addressed as priorities changed pretty significantly from including many, many more things. I know we all have a concern about the number of employees, and I think that's what the other motion mentioned. So in lieu of that, and I've got Anjali on the line who could speak to this if more clarity is needed, but we did have an item for $200,000. We were going to delay the capital replacement plan. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in the replacement plan, and at some point, I think the council would be wise to start putting money aside. But we've talked about that internally, and that would be a program that we would be willing to put off. So if we're trading, I'll put up the $200,000 to delay the capital So, if we're trading, I'll put up the $200,000 on the, to delay the capital replacement plan with consultants, so that there's flexibility back there with the employees, flexibility that you've already given me, but that $200,000 is a direct offset to this $200,000 that you see on the board. And then, as to the legal fees, in my memo, I tried to be very explicit. If the council body wants to reduce that somewhat, I think, you know, they're certainly entitled to do that. But I wanted to point out that, and I did in my memo, that there was a period of time when Mr. Howard left the city and there were the interim, Larry Patterson, came in. And then there was, and it was for almost a year. And then there was a period of time of six months for permanent city manager, Mr. Rudemetkin, and then just a period of about three months that Chip Quarter, the deputy city manager who had just arrived at the city, was asked to step in to be the acting city manager. And I can tell you from years of personal experience of coming in as an interim and for consulting with permanent city managers and interim city managers, that legal fees would most normally drop off, because, as I explained in my memo, to take on the initiative of legal challenges, you can't control those that come after you, but when you take on a proactive approach with the attorneys, it's usually not done with actors or interim managers. The council often, very often, asks the interim manager to be, take a watch and see, keep things running smoothly. There may be an initiative here and there, but for the most part, it's being a caretaker. And the interim city manager is usually not around a very long period of time to really get in and get buried into what can be legal challenges or to avert those. When I walked in the door, you had Jaren, and that took a lot of extra effort to really get into and start analyzing there. Along with that, then, in trying to make sure that we were covering all the bases, SEPA wasn't done before with the V over C. So, we felt we needed to really get in there. If we're going to tackle this, let's try to do it right. And that ES, EIS process is an involved one, and we'll be back before the council, I think, on the 1st of December to talk a little bit about that and look to what else we might need to do to reinvest in that. And then, you had, your town center program had been discussed in many ways for a period of time, and the application came in, and those things need to be done with precision if you can afford to do it. I felt we needed to do that, the council supported that, and that took a lot of effort. And your legal fees will reflect that, but it's also to help mitigate the chance of losing battles down the road. So, I just wanted to say that again. But that may be a subject line that the council body wants to look at and wants to review, because certainly the budget is higher. It's higher in part because I proposed to bring legal counsel in-house, so that cost is greater than your basic contract. But then, on the litigation side, there are a number of litigation items, and I provided that to the council under an attorney-client privileged set of documents, that you could look at the contract and see a number of the charges, and as I've mentioned in here, we see a number of those that could be reduced. The outside legal counsel depends on lawsuits, depends on the investment. But thank you for the opportunity to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the history there. I just, in looking back along the history of our actuals on legal expenses, they've never been anywhere near this high. So, I appreciate that, you know, recent past may have had some impact there, but they are much higher than they have been. They were slowly increasing, and now we suddenly took a jump. Part of that was supposed to be to help bring you up to speed. Hopefully, that's in the past. The EIS work should be wrapping up here very shortly. The Jaren matter should be wrapping up here very shortly. The SEPA, sorry, the SEPA and EIS matter should be wrapping up. So, I'm just not seeing why we would carry that forward. My recommendation, again, would be to reduce the budget, and that if there are needs that come forward, you can come to the council and we can approve additional spending. But to your point, Mr. City Manager, and I thought you made it very well in the memo you submitted to us, we have been deficit budgeting, and I think we need to stop deficit budgeting and get a little more precise in our budgeting. And given that, even if we take the entire bank capacity of tax increases, we are still going to have a deficit, and we're still going to have to dip into our ending fund balance. So, my preference would be to budget much more conservatively, and then to ask you to come forward to the council, ask for money when needed in whatever areas if we're going to have to dip into that ending fund balance. And that seems like a much more prudent and fiscally conservative way to move forward in our current financial climate and economic climate, and also will provide far more transparency both to the council and to the public in terms of where we're spending our dollars. So, I would definitely like to see us reduce those legal fees. My understanding from several of our past city managers that when we bring a legal counsel in house, it will reduce the cost.
Point of order, please. Mayor Moran, point of order.
Sorry, I'm hitting the wrong button here. What is, Councilmember Gamblin?
The point of order is, we're supposed to be talking to the motion or the amendment on the floor, and council member is now speaking to her past motions that were rejected. Can we please keep the conversation to the motion or to the amendment that's on the floor rather than rehashing what has already been voted down?
Point taken. Yes, let's try to keep our comments to the motion that is on the floor.
Somebody want to restate what the motion on the floor is?
It is the... Chris, do you state the amendment that is on the floor?
Yeah, the amendment on the floor is what's in front of you right now, which is the city manager's proposed budget reduction, that's $4.33 million. It's in the bio.
Okay. And then, Councilmember, Councilmember Stewart, if you're, if you have no more comments over what is on the screen now, than the next person that I have in the...
No, I'm done. I'm, I'm, you know, it wouldn't be a council meeting if Councilmember Gamblin didn't try to make me stop talking, so I'm good.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Gamblin, you're next in the chat box.
Yeah, that's the second time Councilmember Stewart personally attacked me. I wish we would stop calling that out. I made a perfectly reasonable point of order. It was directed at the mayor. If she has comments, would you please direct them at the mayor also and not at me personally? Thank you.
Councilmember Gamblin, do you have comments? Do you have comments for...
I think we've answered them. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments for... Okay. Then, seeing none, then I'm going to call the question for the amendment of what is on the screen. Mike, will you call the...
Mayor Moran?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Mauchau?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Nay.
Councilmember Ritchie? Councilmember Ross?
Councilmember Ross, was that, it was on mute, so can you repeat your...
Councilmember Stewart? Councilmember Trine?
Okay, that was a 5-2, the motion of the amendment fails. So, going back to the original motion, Councilmember Ross, would you state the original motion?
Yes, I recommend that the budget be reduced by $6 million in expenses, which can include the $4.3 million in additional cost identified by staff during this meeting.
Okay, and who was the second on that? I don't remember.
I was the second.
Okay, and Councilmember Trine was the second? And would you call the...
Mayor Moran?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Mauchau?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin? Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Okay, that was a 5-2 vote, and that motion passes. Okay, and we're going to, yes, it is just a few minutes before... Deputy Mayor, did you...
Yeah, I just made a motion to move to extend to 10:45.
Okay, do I hear...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend to 10:45. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, those who oppose, can I see hands?
You can hear Ritchie.
Okay, yes. Okay, who was all nay?
Trine.
Trine?
Ritchie was a nay.
Moran was a nay, Trine was a nay. Okay.
Just want to remind council, we have to pass something on the taxes before we leave tonight, or we're going to have to have another meeting.
It was a 3-4 vote?
That is incorrect. Point of order, that is incorrect. We do not need to pass anything regarding tax increases tonight. That is an incorrect statement. Thank you.
No, we have to either bank or pass them. We have to submit something to town by November 30.
Motion passes to extend to 10:45. And Deputy Mayor, I'm going to have you take over the meeting from this time forward.
Okeydoke. I'll get to my agenda. Hang on. Are you leaving, Mayor?
I am.
Okay, let me open up the chat here and find out if there's anyone else that's in the queue. Okay, so thus far, we have capped hiring at 1:30, and we have just done some budget cuts, but we still haven't passed a budget as a whole. So, I don't know if anyone has...
Move to table.
Deputy Mayor.
Move to table.
Yes, the city manager.
I was just going to speak on behalf of the mayor. She's going to pick up her things, and then she's going to go home and try and pick up from there. So, we may see her back on. She's just unable to stay here right now.
Very good, thank you.
I move to table the budget vote until December.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Because we were starting to do a discussion.
Sure, we don't have to finalize the budget now. I feel like we've got a lot more work to do. It's getting late, and we do have to, if I understand correctly, we do have to make a decision to either bank or raise the taxes, or we will not be allowed to collect taxes going into next year, at least. That's what I thought Aaron stated at the beginning of the meeting. So, I would like us to be able to move to the next agenda item.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, that was the third one?
Mike, I think we may need a roll call on this one.
Mayor Moran?
I'm stopped right now.
Could we please restate the motion?
I've moved to table the budget discussion until December.
Mayor Moran?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Mauchau?
Nay.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Nay.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Nay.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Trine?
Okay, I think that was 5-2, motion fails. So, we are still on the budget, and I would undertake a motion, if someone has one, to pass the budget as amended.
I move that we pass the budget as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Trine, did you want to speak to your motion?
I think we've said enough.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Ross?
Yes, I guess the question I have is more technical in nature. Approving the budget, but we have not addressed the revenue property tax, does that constitute a missing piece of approving the budget, and do we need to complete that first before we approve the budget?
Deputy Mayor, I'll have Finance speak to it, and we were just discussing, if the council doesn't do anything, it's a default to the general reserves. But we want clarity. Go ahead, Aaron.
Right, so, the way I'm hearing the discussion is, there's been action on the expenditure side, but none on the revenue side as of yet. So, the projections for revenue would remain in play, that's the, what's included in the preliminary budget. The second ordinance for property tax would give the council's will for what they want to do in the way of property tax. So, that's the direction that I'm hearing so far.
Effectively, by approving the budget now, we're approving it with a full bank capacity scenario, and then we go and discuss property taxes, then do we revise the approved budget?
You wouldn't necessarily need to, so what would be approved as part of the budget is the projection, which would include the projection of the bank capacity and the 1%. That was what was included in the prelim. Your action actually on the property tax would determine what we would set the levy at.
So, that would automatically revise the approved budget?
You would just underrun the projection if you decide to approve less than the bank capacity and 1% that's included in the projection that was part of the preliminary budget.
So, just since we, it's almost within moments of each other, would it be wiser for us to finish the revenue and then approve the right revenue amount in conjunction with the budget, with revenue and expense?
That certainly would be clear for us.
Okay, I may correct, modify, I don't want to modify it. I guess I don't support the motion that I would like to, the council, finish the property tax review and then be able to button up the budget with the correct revenue in place of the budget, whatever.
So, Trine, if you might want to withdraw his motion, just to make this easier.
So, the question then is to legal, then, like, how, like, is there any advantage to doing it the opposite way that we're doing it right now? Lisa?
Yeah, well, if you do not approve your property...
Yeah, well, if you do not approve your property tax levy tonight, you will not meet the November 30th deadline, which means you will only be able to take the property tax levy last year.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so if you want your... Go ahead, Kent.
I think what Councilmember Ross is trying to say is that we would wrap this all up after we close the public hearing on the property tax levy and have that discussion, and then pass the budget along with whatever Council decides on as far as the property tax levy, and then pass it as what it should be passed tonight, and it just says one thing, rather than passing the budget and then figuring out what we're doing for property tax, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does, and you can do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
All right, then I...
Does that make sense? Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I'll remove my motion, if that's all right with you, Mr. Gamblin.
Yeah, it's fine, and you can take me off the queue. I have the exact same question as Councilmember Ross did.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so if someone from City Hall can remind me, did Mayor Moran close the public hearing on the budget?
Not yet.
Okay, all right, then I'm gonna go ahead and close that public hearing on the budget. And we will move to item two, which is the public hearing, which is the third meeting on the ordinance for the 2021 property tax levy. Mike, is there anyone on the line to speak to that?
There is nobody on the line.
Okay, all right, so we don't have any further comments. So I am gonna close that public hearing on the property tax levy, and I will turn it back over to Council for comment on this. I don't have anybody in the queue. Does anyone want to speak to the property tax levy? Yeah, Councilmember Ross. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Gamblin's got beat you in there first. Sorry.
I'll defer to Councilmember Ross for a moment. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Ross?
Yes, much like the expense side with uncertainty, I don't want to fully pull the lever in my mind. I want to reconsider about what I recommend is 1% plus half of the bank capacity as an interim step. And then any remaining amount in our budget is funded with reserves, and we can see how our actuals turn out and do a deep dive and a more focused discussion in the mid-by. And some of the triggers, the hot points that concern me is, I mentioned earlier, is the artificial propping of our economy with all the stimulus and grants and severance for layoffs, and also uncertainty of the union contract and as well as other economic indicators. So I would recommend that, take the current 1% plus half of the bank capacity of 10%.
Second. Okay, so moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, just really quick, just so I'm sure, because I kind of, this is where I was headed. So you're saying 6%, then? One plus the five is 6%? Sweet, I'm in favor of it.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I'll make a quick comment. I'm supportive of taking half the bank capacity rather than the full bank capacity. I think that roughly translates into probably about $1.7 million annually. I believe if my numbers are right, and Mr. Anton can correct me if I'm incorrect on that. But, okay, thank you. I think it's kind of, it is kicking the can down the road a little bit on maybe some of these projects. We've done some cuts, and that's okay. I know we're gonna have to circle back and pick these up, but we can be that at the mid-by. I think we will be better equipped, more information. We will certainly have more information relative to COVID and where we stand relative to that. It also, in not taking the full bank capacity, we're acknowledging to our residents, you know, that we're all, we're pulling several levers here. We are going to have to use some of the ending fund balance if we are, even if we used the full bank capacity. I'm not sure we would have closed that gap entirely. So we're using multiple levers in that we've cut expenses. We are taking some of the bank capacity. And I do think it's important to explain when we say 6% here, so I think five of bank capacity and then the 1% that is allowable by state law on an annual basis, that it's not an increase in 6% in your property tax bill in totality. The city of Sammamish, in your entire pie chart for your taxes for property taxes only equates to a little over 15%, and does vary depending on which school district you're living in. But, you know, raising it 6% doesn't raise your entire property tax bill by 6%. And Aaron, you may have some quick math on you and can tell residents. I know we use the full bank capacity on a $900,000 house would total $154. One might deduce that less than the bank capacity might be about half that in terms of an impact on an annual basis to a homeowner. But Aaron's pulling some stuff up. That was on the full bank capacity track, $153.
Correct, yep, so your approximation is right in the ballpark there.
Okay, so I just want folks who are listening and watching to understand the magnitude. And I think, you know, we're being cognizant of the fact that, you know, that COVID has impacted us all differently this, you know, this year. Some have been able to maintain, you know, their job, and others have not. And while we're taking some of the banked capacity here, we're not taking all of it. We are deferring on a few things that we need to do. But I think we can circle back and pick up on this when we have more information next year at the mid-by. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Again, I feel like we haven't had the in-depth discussion on the budget that we could have had to figure out how we get our budget to actually reflect what the actuals are probably going to be. And in the past, I have been in favor of taking the 1% because I think that we have to start somewhere. I think this is the worst year ever for us to not just start, but to be adding on the bank capacity. Again, we are sailing into a headwind of economic uncertainty. There are people in our community who have been hit very hard. Our small businesses, many of them are likely not going to be around. If they haven't already gone under, there's still a very good chance they will go under. And again, optimistically, the state will have a $2 billion to $4 billion shortfall in the next four years that they're gonna have to figure out how to close. So there's more coming from other places, undoubtedly. This is the wrong time to do it. We have a large ending fund balance that is not enough to cover our infrastructure projects when and if this Council ever decides to actually get to doing the infrastructure projects. We're going to have to raise revenue via bond or some other method to pay for those infrastructure projects anyway. So if this isn't the rainy day we've been waiting for, I don't know what rainy day we're waiting for. And we are not the Bank of Sammamish, and the fact that we've been holding on to these ending fund balances for so many years with the promise of building out the infrastructure, but we never have, I don't think is fair to our taxpayers either. Again, over the last five years, we've earned millions in interest on taxpayer revenue that we have taken in and just helped. And that is not the role of government to collect taxes and hold on to them. We should only be collecting what we plan to spend. And we've got extra money sitting there that this is the rainy day, so thank you.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, you spoke to this issue very well, Deputy Mayor. I don't really have much to add. This is an in-between step. For 10 years, this lever was not pulled, and it probably should have been at one of those years or multiple of those years. I think this is a good in-between step where we're taking some of the bank capacity, recognizing that we do have our expenses going up. We're giving raises to our employees, our police department, our fire department. All these people are getting raises. We have to give the ability of the city to pay those additional expenses. But we're also trying to recognize that we are in an uncertain situation. We have the COVID, we have the union coming in, so there are some uncertainties. So I think it's a good in-between to take part of the bank capacity and not all of it, and fund the difference. We are using some of the surplus to fund that difference with. So all around, we're trying to give a nod to everyone, people who want the taxes raised, which has been very vocal, which I've heard, people who don't want anything raised, which they've also been heard, people who think we could use our surplus, I've heard that, people who don't think you should use our surplus, I've heard that. So there is multiple streams of input coming, and I think Councilmember Ross, you came up with the good in-between, and will support this motion.
Councilmember Ross?
I can't let the Bank of Sammamish comment lie without giving my perspective. The government does accumulate funds over time for one-time expenditures. The best analogy I can give you is someone saving up for a house purchase. You don't have 20% in year one. You may take five years to accumulate enough funds to put your down payment at 20%. See, put it in savings. That's exactly what the city government does, especially with CIP projects. It puts money aside, accumulates it until they can afford to fund the projects in the list. And so that's critical to realize that. Plus, the operating fund accumulation is usually transferred to CIP projects anyway, so we're not gonna use that mostly for operating one time, so that's my perspective.
Okay, before we go into round two here, is there anyone else that hasn't spoken would like to speak before we go around to you?
Yeah, yes, I want to call for the question.
Okay, well, we still have others in the queue, so we have to vote on that.
At this point, Deputy Mayor, sorry, not to be rude, but we're on a timetable here, and we still have our lobbyists sitting in the, waiting to report votes.
That's fine.
From them, so I would like to call for the question and move this forward to a vote. Thank you.
All those in favor, all those in favor of calling the questions, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I've got two.
I really thought we were moving towards the be more respectful and let everybody have a voice, but that's all right.
I was very respectful.
We have to move to vote.
Guys, please stop. There's one person in charge of the meeting right now. Let her speak, please. There's a 5 or 4-2 vote, correct?
Question's been called. We are calling the question.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Pardon?
Sorry, Chrissy, I'm asking if you want to do a roll call because we all talk over each other because of the delay. I'm just trying to move it along. I apologize if I interrupted.
No, no, that's fine. Councilmember Ross, if you want to restate your motion, then I will have Mike Sugg do a roll call.
Yes. My motion is that we take the 1% allowable levy increase this year and the half of the bank capacity for a total of 6% city property tax levy.
Thank you. Mike, would you be so kind as to do a roll call for this vote, please?
Sure. Deputy Mayor Mauchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
By vote of 4-2, the ayes have it, motion passes. All right, our next, oh, wait, no, we need to pass the budget now with the levy. So I'd entertain a motion on that, please.
I make a motion that we approve the budget as amended.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Again, I recommend a roll call on such an important vote, please.
Yep.
I would agree, Councilmember Ritchie, thank you. Mike, just for the record, will you do a roll call on this, please?
Absolutely. Deputy Mayor Mauchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
By vote of 4-2, we have passed the budget. Thank you, Council. Next agenda item is approval of the 2021 state legislative priorities. I'm not sure who's taking this on. Mike, is that you?
This is me, thank you. We're just getting situated here at City Hall.
No problem.
Kick us off. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council, and City Manager, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst. I'm joined on the line by Luke Esser and Nick Federici, who have just popped on via their webcams. And tonight, we are here to discuss the 2021 legislative priorities. You'll recall, we had this discussion during the last meeting last week on Tuesday, and Council reviewed the draft legislative priorities graphic, which, if you'll give me one moment, I will pull up on the screen. Just exit out this PowerPoint. And it's also included as Exhibit 1 in your packet this evening. The Council didn't appear to have any major concerns with the graphic. However, the mayor asked us to return tonight, as there were a couple Council questions that needed follow-up. The first question was in regard to modifying the voter approval threshold for school bond measures from the current 60% approval requirement to a simple majority. According to Luke and Nick, these proposals have not seriously advanced in the state legislature because such a change would require amending the Washington State Constitution. And constitutional amendments in the state require a 2/3 vote in both the Houses of the Legislature and then subsequent approval by the voters. And reaching this threshold, as you can imagine, is extremely difficult and unlikely in the current situation, political situation as it has been in the past. The second question that was brought up during discussion last week was in regard to draft legislation that would amend the Growth Management Act. And Nick has been reaching out to his network to get a lay of the land. And I'm wondering if, Nick, could you maybe give us a brief update on what you found regarding that GMA legislation?
Absolutely, thank you. Mike, and this wants to, I think, Councilman Trine's question last week, particularly about what's coming out of Joe Tovar at the Rocco South Center. I'll give, I talked to a number of folks who are involved in the Growth Management Conversation and have, and are working on drafts. Part of the bad news around that is that none of those are finalized yet. Literally, everybody I talked to indicated that things are still undergoing revision and preparation for session, so we don't have, so we still have a little bit of a moving target. Here's what I do know. There's likely to be three proposals, given serious consideration. One regarding adding a climate goal to the Growth Management Act. A second one, beefing up the housing element of the Growth Management Act. And then Mr. Tovar's proposal that was done as part of the roadmap implementation, frankly, combines a lot of the pieces of those two versions, and then additional pieces based on input from folks that were part of that roadmap process. So the climate goals discussion focuses on lowering vehicle miles traveled and lowering carbon emissions by using existing carbon targets that were enacted by the Legislature this year, focusing on the 10 largest cases in the state, which have 80% of the state's population, which includes King County, obviously. And then would amortize that over a regional and city and county population basis. And then would require the counties and cities do a climate action plan by specific date based on the transportation and land use impacts, come up with something called a Climate Mitigation and Resiliency Plan that would indicate how every city and county is planning to decrease... is planning to decrease the carbon emissions from their jurisdiction. That's the first piece. The second piece is the housing element, which would dig down a lot more and become much more detailed than the current requirements or for reporting and and compliance in housing. It would focus on not just what types of housing and and how much, but would dig down deeper into the fact that housing policy has been used in the past historically as an exclusionary tool exhibiting some racial bias. And so so this legislation would require review or update based on historical racial bias or exclusions and affirmatively promote fair housing policies that that used to be in place, but which have been sort of phased out, would go back the other direction, and then would require justifications to what were the exclusionary why were the exclusionary policies put in place in the past, and what is the jurisdiction doing to overcome those with a plan to do so, as well as how to prevent and or how to prevent displacement as as development occurs. Those are the two bills that I that in talking to folks throughout the GMA sort of world seem like they have the strongest footing. The third piece from Mr. Tovar at the Rocco South Center that merges those two, the roadmap process is a process funded by the legislature, I think two years ago, maybe last year, that give the Rocco South Center the responsibility of putting together around capable discussion that everybody put their input into. Mr. Tovar's proposals, I understand, it is sort of a sort of mixing pot for all the various GMA proposals, in the opinion of a lot of folks I talked to, because it has so many different opinions melded in it, doesn't have a strong chance of success moving forward. And in addition, the legislator, Senator Dean Tacco from Longview, who was sort of the architect of this roadmap proposal, lost his reelection bid earlier this month, and so he will not be in the legislature to see this work forward. That was sort of his his pet project, if you will. Bottom line, I think the two, the housing and the and the climate pieces seem likely to get a lot of attention by the legislature. The Tovar proposal, much less so, if for no other reason that it's sort of a hodgepodge of a lot of different input as opposed to the previous the first two proposals coming from the environmental and planning community moving forward. So that's what I found out about the various proposals. Mr. Sugg and I talked a little bit about language. If you wanted to to add something to the back page of you of your legislative agenda that dealt with this, some ways to try to talk about opposing efforts to impose undue planning burdens on local governments without appropriate funding or something along those lines. The one piece that Mr. Tovar's bill had that the others did not, that was positive, was a specific requirement that none of the new requirements could be in place unless there was funding to go along with that that would implement that planning process. So that was a positive piece that perhaps will be will be pulled out of that and put in those other two pieces of legislation to ensure fairness there. So that's that's my analysis of sort of what's on the table from talking to Futurewise and AWC and a lot of other folks in GMA land.
Excellent. Thank you, Nick. So just to wrap up here, again, this graphic is still a draft, and we may still modify it as needed if we wanted to add a priority or some language around what Nick had just described. And once the council is comfortable with the list, the recommendation tonight is that it be approved by motion. So with that, I will turn it back to the mayor for discussion.
Great, thank you. I'm looking in the chat and not seeing anything there. I would certainly be supportive of throwing something on there about unfunded mandates, having just finished our budget and making some cuts. Unfunded mandates are not all that much fun. So, Councilmember Stewart?
I move that we approve the legislative priorities as shown.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Councilmember Stewart, did you want to take the motion?
I think we've got a great set here. The front is very Sammamish specific. I think we've got information here on the back. I think the rest of that is still too squishy to be making any statements on at this point and would just muddy our message. So I think if there are unfunded mandates that come down, we'll have opportunities through Sound Cities to voice our concerns, and we'll probably be joined by many of our fellow city members. So I don't know that we need to muddy the waters here with that. Not that I don't agree with you, Deputy Mayor, I just don't know that it's necessary.
I don't see any other discussion, but I generally speaking, I do agree with you, Councilmember Stewart, that, you know, if unfunded mandates come down, cities are usually quick to jump on those, and SCA will be a good venue for us to bet those and have a larger collective voice than on the back of a piece of paper. Okay, I don't see any more comments. We have motion. Oh.
Oh, Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I just wanted to just quickly thank you, Luke and Nick, on behalf of the council and the mayor and staff for your hard work. It's I know it's tedious at times just myself going through some of the legislation paperwork and policy. So really, we do appreciate all the hard work you guys have done, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Okay, all right, motion on the floor to adopt our 2021 legislative priorities. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, by a vote of I think our mayor pops back on at the start of this, so I believe that was a 7-0 vote. Okay, Nick, Luke, thank you for joining us. We're off the hook much earlier tonight than you were last week, so.
Thanks so much. My my last comment would be I would like to, to the extent possible, if we can arrange that meeting with legislators that we try to do in December to familiarize them with the city's priorities, I think that's always a good use of time.
Yes, agreed, agreed. And Mr. Sugg, if you would make sure that the good people down at SCA get a copy of our legislative priorities, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. We will be sending this out to SCA as well as all of the nine legislators, state legislators that represent our city, and we'll also work on scheduling a legislative meet and greet so that we can begin promoting these priorities.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any council reports? There aren't any listed on here, but run down and find out if anyone's got a council report. Nobody? Okay. Mr. City Manager, did you have anything to report?
Not this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, and if there's no thanks for.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, by a vote of 7-0, we are adjourned.
Aye.